You're on record.
Yes, on the record?
Yes, you're on record.
I'll have everybody's attention, please. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10,006, it's 10,046 edsec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll. I'm gonna, just before she calls the roll, we have two members who are homesick. They are on a Zoom call with me. They can see everything that's going on. They can test, they can ask questions or make comments. The microphones are here. Qualifies as them being pregnant. Present. Go ahead, Nora.
Yeah.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Bernie, did you hear?
I didn't hear, no.
You're pregnant.
She wants you to say it. Say present, Bernie.
I'm here, I'm present.
Okay.
Mr. Jaskiewicz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Here.
Mr. Pareek.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Ms. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Willins. Chairman Iraquin.
Present.
We also have with us our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
Start off with the pledge of allegiance, please.
Justice for all.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none, seen none. Okay, we got a correspondence, application 2166, CAC management. You might remember that was a two-family house over in the Lake Precipiny area. They're withdrawing their application without prejudice. Now, we have two resolutions. The Chick-fil-A resolution. I saw a lot of cars, emails going back and forth.
Mr. Chairman, there's a question about time in which Chick-fil-A would pay for police, for the grand opening in the, in the resolution, there was 30 days. But I believe, after talking to the engineer and counsel for Chick-fil-A, Mr. O'Neill, that their corporate policies, they will pay up to two months, so 60 days. So that is satisfactory to the members, then we can amend that resolution. I put a page where it shows it would be the 60 days for police traffic control for the first 60 days, yeah, the first 60 days.
After that?
After that, then, they basically said they would discuss if there was a continuing problem, but they don't think that there will be, based upon the fact that there is another Chick-fil-A fairly close, and also based upon the fact that the drive-through can stack 64 cars.
Okay, any other questions or discussions on the Chick-fil-A resolution?
The only thing I'd like to mention, Mr. Chairman, is to me, this, this application was what our work is all about, on the Board of Adjustment, and the behalf of the residents and behalf of the applicants. Because frankly, if you recall, the initial submission of this request for a Chick-fil-A on Route 46 there was, was met with some concern and trepidation by residents in the area. They came forward, they made good cases. I think we, as a group on the board, asked some good questions and representing the township interest here. And I think the applicant was just stellar, it should be the role model of how this process should work, where the residents and us work together with the applicant to come up with a very satisfactory solution. And I think the resolution is echoing all of those considerations that we had to take and which residents took and the applicant did. I think that it was a model for other applicants and other residents that had issues with applicants.
Thank you, Mr. Willins. Any other questions or comments? Would someone like to move that, that application forward?
Somewhat. Second, Jaskiewicz.
Any discussion? Nora, please call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Iraquin.
Yes. The resolution passes. Application 2242, 11 Water View Boulevard, this was a variance to install signs. Is there any questions or comments on that application?
No.
No.
Jaskiewicz, Kaplan, Mazzarella, Pareek, Ready, Schneider, and Willins. I cannot vote on that. So we move that.
Somewhat. Second, Jaskiewicz.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz. I mean, sorry, Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Pareek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willins.
The resolution passes. Nora, I have an email from Assad Rizvi. I'm sending this email to grant, to grant the board an extension of time to make a decision on my application for February 20th, day 22, 2023. That's.
Right, we're carrying this to February 8th, 2023.
Okay, that's in order. Any other correspondence or?
No.
So we're, we have to make a motion to carry it?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to carry case 2182 to February 8th?
Somewhat. Second, Jaskiewicz.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it takes care of that one. And that one, and that one. Application 2231, Sebastian Parko, 20 Arnold Drive, sea variance to install a six-foot-high fence. Mr. Parko, come on up.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear in firm testimony you're about to give before the Board's true self you got? And for the record, you are Mr. Parko Sebastian, and you're the owner of the subject property? All right, thank you, you're sworn, you can have a seat, just please speak into the microphone, Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn. All right.
Okay, um, you want to put a six-foot-high solid fence?
Yes.
And why, why do you think we need a six-foot-high solid fence?
We're just looking for more privacy, my wife and I, in our backyard. We have a newborn daughter at home, so we're looking for more privacy.
You have, you have to speak a little louder, okay?
Hold the microphone closer.
Speak into the microphone.
We're just looking for more privacy in our home, we have a newborn daughter at home, so we're just looking for, our, the fence that we have now is not private.
And you're on a corner lot, you have two streets?
Uh, yes, technically, yes.
Two front yards?
And? Yes.
I'm, I'm familiar with Arnold Drive, whereabouts, what, what is, what, so, you, because it's a corner lot, you want to face, put a, a, along the, along the street that's the side of your house or the front of your house?
Uh, the side.
The side.
The, the back, the side of the back.
Uh huh.
And so we're like all the way in the back, near like the back of the ShopRite? So we're almost like a dead end, basically.
Just looking to see the map.
This is a corner lot, so we would have two front yards. So I think that's the, what's impacting the development.
You're on the corner of Arnold and Alba.
Yeah, right, and then Alba is a dead end.
Uh huh.
And the six-foot variance would be on the Alba, facing the Alba street.
Right, that's why we're here.
I think I lost my connection. Bernie and Davey, are you still there? You guys back?
Yeah, we're down, what, what happened?
Uh, I don't know, I think. Yeah, I probably touched one of the keys, but accident. All right, so a corner property, now, we don't normally, how far off the property line is the fence going to be?
Um, I, maybe about five, six feet off, I'm estimating.
We don't normally approve six-foot-high stockade fences, not in very, very few instances where it couldn't be done any other way, and give people price. Normally what we like is a five-foot-high fence, four foot solid, and then one foot of a lattice or some.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it looks, it makes it look a little neater. The other thing we would like is that you do some plantings outside the fence, and they don't have to be, um.
Extravagant.
Extravagant, very good. You don't, nothing blown out, just, you have some small planting, maybe, because I'm sure there are deer in your neighborhood, right? So, arborvidia, you're just gonna be serving them salad all day. But, you know, some small plantings that we make it. You live with a five-foot-high fence with one foot open?
Yeah, you mean like five foot and then a foot on top of that?
No.
Or four foot. Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I, I, this area is an area that sees a lot of police activity.
Really?
Yeah, really, yeah, mm-hmm. And it is in back of ShopRite. There's a lot, you know, and I think that, I, I'm curious when this ordinance, I'm fully supportive of this ordinance as written, but I'm curious when it was written, because, you know, Precipiny has transcended to becoming a very bustling community. And I think we gotta take this on a case-by-case basis, and.
I don't disagree with you.
And in this case, I, I think it would be prudent and negotiable, compromising, if we turned around and perhaps in this case, due to the level of activity that that area sees, um, to do maybe five with an extra foot of the lattice to preserve the aesthetics of our township.
And still do the plantings outside?
Uh, correct, yeah, mm-hmm.
Let me just counter with one small point. If you put a six-foot-high stockade fence around your backyard, and somebody gets into your backyard, they're gonna break the back door down because nobody's gonna see them.
Well, I would argue that, if they want to get in the five foot, six foot, four foot, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
And here's, if, if it makes the applicant feel more comfortable, as you go past the six-foot side of that fence on Alba, there's not a house behind, beyond you, right? So how many people actually drive past that six-foot, what would be the six-foot fence?
So there is a back road there.
Johnny Farm Road?
Yeah, yeah, right, that road right there, so, it's where ShopRite.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's a public service road.
I see exactly where you're talking about.
So it's an unpaid road, so there's a lot of people walking to the ShopRite, back and forth.
Oh, that's interesting.
People, people park there too.
Yeah.
To go to ShopRite or the gym, they're there.
Yeah.
So we're, they're constantly passing by our backyard.
You know, many, many years ago, there was a drive-in movie there.
Really?
Yep, it was the Partridge Drive-In, and kids would go to the, they wouldn't go in their car, they would go there on foot, and they would steal leave lawn furniture out of everybody's backyard and bring it over to sit on.
Now we have to give them six feet.
Oh, man. Okay, so, we seem to have a, an indication that a six-foot with a one-foot lattice would work.
Five plus one.
Five plus one, five plus one, five plus one?
Five plus one.
Five plus one, okay? Right, and a planting outside, you're gonna make them look nice, right?
Yep, yeah.
You're gonna get stuff to, just to grow a little higher.
There's some stuff already there, and back, back there on that road.
You can always talk to the town forester, who can, who can give you ideas on what, what works and what doesn't work.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can make one suggestion, too, this is an old survey, and looking at the tax map, it doesn't really jive as far as the easement that's showing on the old survey and the new easement.
Oh, okay.
And the dimensions of the lot. So I would suggest that you have a surveyor stake out what you're going to do as far as the fence.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. I remember we're not developing this book, right after I moved to town. Okay, uh, any other questions from the board?
No.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given? I hear none, seen none.
Oh, we have a question.
Oh, we do? Come on up, please come up, got us.
For the record, statement.
Nicholas Homiak from Lake High Lot, I'd just like to make a statement on the vegetation. It would, should be recommended that no invasive species, especially barberry, be planted there, it's a big problem in the state, and they're trying to work on it now at a higher level.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
You won't plant any poison ivy, right?
Barberry.
Barberry.
No.
I don't think there's a big market for that.
There are any, there's nothing else you'd like to add? Are there any members in the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none, seen none. Mr. Schneider, you like the application?
Yeah, I do. The applicant, you know, wants to maintain a level of privacy in a very active area that sees a lot of vehicular law enforcement activity, and I think that it's prudent that, you know, we afford him that, that right, and that enjoyment.
Someone frame a resolution?
I will. An application 2231, Sebastian Parko, 20 Arnold Drive, block 698, lot 67, zone R3, that we grant the sea variance to install a five-foot-high solid with one foot in addition lattice fence, contrary to section 430-11 AMB.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Pareek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willins. Iraquin.
Yes. Results of the, the grant is granted, we will memorialize this at our first meeting in November, and you'll be free to go ahead at that point, okay?
Thank you.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
And we now have application 2239, Calistus Anthony, six Upper Rainbow Trail.
And is this your?
This is my architect.
Architect, right, sir, raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm that your testimony you're gonna give before the Board's true self you got?
Yes.
And for the record, you are Anthony Calistus. Sir, your name?
I'm sorry, Joseph. Did I do?
Joseph.
Not probably.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect? And your testimony will be architectural? And you've been sworn either before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey? It's right, Bob.
Not bad.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, he's sworn as an expert. Sir, you can have a seat, please speak into the microphone.
So who's gonna testify? The applicant or the architect? Okay.
If it would be helpful with your permission, I would like to give some color, add some color by giving my personal background, and after that have Mr. Bruno speak.
Okay.
Is it okay?
Yeah, just, you have to speak a little bit louder.
Can you hear me? Thank you, good evening. I'm Calistus J. Anthony, and Regina Anthony, my wife, and I are the joint applicants for this permit, and I hope, you know, first, first of all, I thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. And currently, we are, we are both living in Bergen County, raising our adult children, who are now adults. And now we are at our retirement stage, and bought, bought this property at the Rainbow Lakes Community in 2020. Now, over the three years, we were looking at the situation, community fabric and, you know, and the environment, you know, to make sure that it suits well. And in fact, we are really in love with the community, the community who have already been, is, is very welcoming, and nature-wise, it's perfect for our retirement. And in our, the adult children I mentioned, one of them also got married and settled in Rockaway, which is only 10 minutes from our, this lake house. And also, our daughter is a physician practicing at Dental Pediatrics, who is also serving several childrens in our lake community already. So we already built, integrated into the environment already. So only problem is the property is relatively small, and even though we want to downsize, we are empty nesters now, we want to downsize, but we want to make sure the space is adequate enough for the children and grandchildren to come and spend the time with us. So it's a little tight property, but we would like to, you know, stretch as much as we can to get, give ourselves enough room to have an adequate living. As far as feedback from our community, we have reached out to several community members, and the feedback was only positive and very encouraging and supportive, and generally they were all responded by saying, you know, it's an old dwelling there, it's a, it's a cottage, built a long time ago for maybe the New Yorkers to come and spend the weekend. So that was, it was meant to be, so it's time for that old dwelling to go. So the neighbors were encouraging to take it down and put a new one, which is only going to, you know, help the neighborhood look good. Even I, I, we have spoken to the trustees of the lake also, they were very supportive, they are willing to help in any way they can, if they can be giving reference or so. And also, one of them even went as far, as far as to tell, you know, that we were in good standing with the neighborhood, and they would be surprised if any of those, any of, anybody from the community would have an object unto that. So the bi immediate neighbors on both sides, Mr. Chung and Mr. Chris Duffy, they were very supportive. In fact, Duffy was encouraging me to move my foundation towards his house.
Are you coming here to testify tonight?
No, I, I.
So you can't testify to what they would say?
You cannot, okay. I have a text from him to say, please tell the town that whatever you want to build, I'm very supportive of that. Why I'm mentioning him is, he's the closest, yes, okay, no problem, I'll stay out of it. So again, once again, I thank you for your time, we are already in transition, we moved the doctor to somebody in Mountain Lake already, and we managed to spend a couple of days with the grandchildren at this house, even though it's likely very limited. And we started shopping for a church where we would like to register as parishioners. With your help, we look forward to finishing up the project and move, and move here, calling this a permanent retirement house for us. And thank you again for your time. If you have any question, I'll be happy to answer, otherwise I'll pass it on to Mr. Bruno.
Before I begin, I'd like to pass out some, a photo exhibit that I prepared.
You want to mark that? A1?
I'm marking A1.
And that's photos?
Photos, yeah. And I'll read you those in one second.
Thank you.
Okay, so once everyone, can everyone hear, hear me okay? Once everyone has the photos, I'll will walk through it. Okay, so photograph number one is the front or east elevation view of the subject residence. You'll see that it's set up above that, that stone wall, there's a garage below. And in this, this front corner on the right, that is where we're proposing to expand the first floor to fill in that, that corner, and I'll go through the floor plans in a moment. I just want to go through the photos to give the board a sense of the, the environment here.
But this is coming down?
Yes.
You're not taking the whole house? The house?
The house is coming down.
House coming down.
Yes, yeah, but, but we would be filling, so we'd be creating, we'd be buil, building a full rectangle rather than the door like as it is now.
Where does the road start? It's, does it start beyond the parked car?
It does, yes.
So that's road, that's not driveway?
Correct.
Okay.
Beyond the parked car. You know, to the, you know, forward in the photograph is the roadway.
So the stairway is really pretty much at, maybe a little curbside of the roadway proper?
The stairway is, comes into, if you look at the, the site plan prepared by Mr. Lantelm, you'll, you'll see the stairway coming into the.
But the road is pretty much right there, too.
Right, right. And then photograph number two is the rear or west elevation view of the subject residence, that is the side of the house that faces the lake.
And that's the deck that you want to keep?
That is correct.
And not expand?
Correct.
Can, can we go back to the first picture real quick?
Sure.
The structure on the left-hand side of this picture, is that how high you're proposing? I would assume the answer is yes, how high you're proposing this?
No, the, I'll, I'll go through the drawings, we are proposing a two-story house.
Isn't that, oh, so next door is not a two-story house? The one that I'm looking at?
Oh, oh, you're talking about the, the house next door?
Yeah, comparatively speaking, to the house next door, is it going to be the same height? Roundabout? What is it?
You're talking about the?
I'm sorry, is that right here?
Still a building in the picture.
Another building on the left-hand side.
Oh, I'll go through that, I have a, a better photograph of that.
Okay.
If I can interrupt for one second also, based on the surveys submitted, the major portion of the masonry stone wall, it's in the right of way. That is correct. Okay, so I'm gonna extract right out. Sure. And again, photograph number two is the rear or west elevation view of the subject residence that's facing the lake. Photograph number three is a view looking eastward from the deck, so that's between the two properties, looking towards the street. Photograph four is a view looking southward from the front of the subject residence, that is the, that is the house that you, that you asked me about.
Right, and so my question still remains, and so the height of, the height of his development, your, your client's development, is it gonna be pretty much the same as the Apex?
It's roughly the same, I didn't measure the house, of course, the next-door neighbor's house.
Yep.
But I'll go through that, but yes, it will be a two-story house above. And then photograph number five is the view looking southward from the rear of the subject residence, so you're seeing the rear of that house. Photograph number six is a view looking northward from the front of the subject residence, so that's a, you'll, you'll see, that's a two-story house as well, above the, that garage that's at the street level.
Would you please speak up?
Sure. Photograph number seven is a view looking northward from the rear of the subject residence, that's the, the lakeside, and then photograph number eight is a view looking westward from the rear of the subject residence, so that's, that's, that's across the lake.
So this is the house that's coming down, or this is a view of, across the lake?
A view across the lake, from the house it's coming down.
Oh, okay, from the house, okay.
Right. So what I'll do here is I'll just go to the board for a few moments. The, I took the, the site plan that you have in front of you, so let me just move it so the other board members can see. And I added a little color. This, right now, this red outline is the proposed building. What I've highlighted in yellow is the proposed first, the first, the proposed footprint expansion. Remember in the first photograph, I said that it was like that L shape that we had, we, we were going to fill in when we built the new house? So that's the area that would be filled in essentially. What I've outlined, what I've colored in orange here is the permitted building envelope by ordinance. We've got a severely undersized lot here, and it's also not rectangular, so, so if we take all of the setback lines that Mr. Lantelm had, had drawn on here and, and colored in the middle, this orange area is the permitted zoning setbacks, or, or the permitted building envelope. To give you, to give you some, some, some perspective on this, the required lot area in the R3 zone is 15,000 square feet. This lot, existing, is 2,739 square feet.
What's the total square footage of the proposed house?
Total square footage of, of the first and second floors is 2,088 square feet. First floor footprint would be 1,015, that, and that's plus the, that second floor balcony, and the second. balcony. And the second floor, um, area is 1,073.
Is there a basement?
There is a basement, yes. And the garage is at the basement level because the basement level is at street level essentially.
And it's a one-car?
It's a one-car. It, well, it's one-car wide, but because of the depth of the house we could fit tandem front, front to back. And I will turn to my floor plan, which you have in front of you. Uh, the basement floor plan is arranged with tandem front-to-back parking in the garage. There is a playroom for the children and a utility room. At the first floor, we've got open living space with a kitchen, guest bedroom, bath closet, and a lavatory, which is situated towards the side entrance so that people coming in from outside the lake, the deck, et cetera, could use some of the facilities. And then the second floor plan, we have two, two bedrooms, a laundry, and a lounge area with the, with the aforementioned balcony overlooking the lake.
So why is it in a three-story building if the garage is street level?
Garage is street level, the rest of that
Right, that's the first.
Right, the rest of, but you take the average because the rest of the house is two stories above grade. Because if you're going back to the photograph and even if you look at the grading plan that Mr. Lantelm prepared,
I understand, yes, no, I just, um, so the definition for a ground floor story is if it, most of the building is underground graded and as the garage is sticking out, there's a, you can calculate the amount of area where it's sticking out of the ground by measuring it around the building and that determines whether or not it's a story or not.
Right, so we, we're not a three-story, we're, we're not at three stories. And the, um, Mr. Lantelm has got a, um, has got his building height calculated here. So the, uh, the permitted, the permitted height of the, of the house is two and a half stories or thirty, and 35 feet tops. We are proposing two stories, 25.7 feet, in accordance with the, the ordinance definition of height. So the, the front or east elevation, this is the garage, and then we've got the two stories above that. Um, and then in the back we have, you see that, that the, um, the first floor of the house is only about 16 to 20 inches above the, above the, um, the deck, the, uh, the, the great plain there. And you'll see on the south and the north elevation, the slope of, of the land. So we're not on a, it's not like it's a flat piece of land that we're just sticking up high out of. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, on this drawing, where is that deck that's staying?
The deck that's staying is here, the west elevation.
Okay, and then the balcony is going to go over the top of that deck basically?
The balcony will be over, oh, that, that balcony will be over a portion of, of the deck itself. And that also, um, yeah, yeah, that gives a, um, little bit of space, you know, outdoor space at the second floor level.
So there's a front door?
The door is actually to the side on the north elevation, not at, not at the front.
How many entrances and exits are there in the house?
Yeah, two. One, one on the north elevation, which is the, which is the side, one at the west elevation, which is the rear. But, but we have two.
Will there ever be proposed parking in the driveway outside of the, in front of the front door?
The, um, the way that everything is situated here, it's only, um, it's only a little, little over 10 feet.
Right, so I would
Right, so that's why we, we're proposing the double, the, the
That would be one of the conditions if, if something was to be stipulated that then there's no parking in that driveway because it is 10 feet.
Of course, you can't park, um, you can't stick out into the roadway.
Less time you can stick out.
Right, right, yeah, yeah. So that's why we have the, um, the tandem front-to-back parking at the, at the garage level.
So how, how is this, uh, proposed house compared to the neighborhood or houses next to you? A square foot advice?
Square foot advice, I did not do an assessment of the houses next door, but if you look at the photographs, it's, it's pretty easy to tell that, that the one to the, immediately to the, as you're looking at the house from the street, immediately to the left, that's, that's larger. And then on, that's in photograph number, probably photograph number four. And I'll just hold it up so we make sure that everybody sees the same one.
And what's the lot size of that, uh, where the house is?
Of that, that's, that second one, I don't know the lot size, but by this diagram it looks like it's probably a little more than double.
It's about five, six thousand?
It, it looks like it's, it's double plus a little bit more because the, um, you've got a sort of a strange geometry there because we're on the, the curve of the lake.
Okay. I got, I have one more question. So photo one shows the steps up here, right, the current steps? Looking at what you're proposing, you're moving them back? Is that correct?
Yeah, the steps are going to be moved away from, away from the street and parallel to the front wall of the house.
So then you're going to extend the masonry wall, which is already in the right-of-way?
The masonry wall that's in the right-of-way is not being touched. It's being altered within the property, between the front lot line and the front wall of the house. That's where it's being altered.
All right, so, still, I mean, just looking at the picture, you're going to basically round it off to the front where the steps were, I assume?
The, the, the wall where, yeah, 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 the wall in the front
It's going to go right there.
Right, closer to the house, that's where we're going to be coming up. We're not, we won't be coming up where we do now.
On the drawing here, which got the masonry wall already in the line of sight, it just looks like you're adding more in the line of sight. That's my only question.
Yeah, I think that what, what he's, what he's got on his drawing here is actually removing the stair and just continuing the wall around to create the new stairway closer to the house.
So there will be some construction within the right-of-way?
Right, that's on
Yeah.
So any, um, pro disturbance, uh, disturbance within the right-of-way, you'd have to coordinate that with the township manager?
Right, that would have to be done in strict accordance with the municipal standards. Because they also have to re, repave the driveway and that will have some interface with, with, with the street because there's no, there's no curb per, per se here to, to, to separate the driveway and the street. It's just, it just flows right in.
Any other questions of this witness? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? Matter of fact, either witness. I hear none, see none.
I, I, uh, Mr. Chairman, just, I don't have all the documentation readily available here, but I, I just want to confirm that we're looking, I, I hear the arguments for the family need this and I hear the architects' plan, but what, what level of variance are we looking here for, for impervious coverage and a couple of things? I thought it was very excessive.
Uh, yeah. Because I'd be happy to go through them.
I got them right here.
Okay.
Um, they have, they need a variance for a lot size. 15,000 is allowed, they have 2,739. Minimum lot width is 100 feet, they got 44.01. Minimum, minimum front yard 40 feet, they got 10.3. Side yard 10 foot, they got 4.7. Both side yards, 20, they have 10. Rear yard, 20 feet, they got 12.5. Accessory side yard, existing deck to remain, 6 foot allowed, they're proposing 0.7 feet. Accessory rear yard, existing deck to remain, 10 feet is allowed and they're proposing zero. Page two. Yards and courts, open deck, 19 percent, they have 55.02 percent. Building coverage 15 percent, 38.77 percent. Impervious coverage 30 percent, they're proposing 68.41. Fences and walls, 6 inches, they're proposing 0 inches. I guess, Mr. Chairman, what I did not see was to be what were the existing conditions versus the proposed new conditions. I understand they have an underside lot, they have family needs that increase, but the point I would like to make is that, uh, you know, what they need for the family might not fit on that lot.
I can go through that if you'd like.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. He's going to go through that.
Yeah, um, as far as the, um, the setbacks, the front yard setback, again, is 40 feet required. 10.3 is existing, we're proposing to maintain that at 10 foot, at 10.3. Side yard, 4.6 is existing, we'll actually be 4.7, so that's essentially the same. Um, side yard, uh, the other side yard i- is existing at 4.6, will be at 5.3, so we're increasing the side yard slightly there. The rear yard, we're at 12.8 existing, we're proposing 12.5. So, uh, all of these, these, um, these deficiencies are pre-existing non-conforming. We're essentially rebuilding the house.
What's the existing impervious?
Excuse me, David, is that included, impervious coverage?
Well, I didn't get that part yet.
He's still going on, let me push.
So the lot coverage, the lot coverage is being increased from 32.5 percent to 38.8, which is that, that, um, infill in the front corner that I mentioned, plus I, plus we have to count the balcony. And then the impervious coverage is, is being increased from 61.4 percent to 68.4, which, which goes hand in hand with that expansion of that, that, that filling in of the front corner, so to speak.
Okay.
Okay, so, so, so the lot coverage and the, and the impervious coverage are the, are really the only two of the, of the, uh, non-conformities that are being proposed to be increased.
So the, could we talk about the impervious coverage for a second?
Sure.
We have no, nothing from the town engineer about any issues on that? And do we foresee any issue with the water runoff?
Any, anything with a residential unit like this would require a plot plan review.
Yes.
At that time, they would redo the drainage evaluation of the property. So the, the downsides for the roof, the, whether or not the soils are adequate for, uh, retention basin, dry well or something like that. So all that still has to be worked out. Then there's no details yet. We don't need the details at this point, but you do need some idea what you're going to do.
Right, if, if the project were to be approved and moved forward, then the, uh, Mr. Lantelm, who's the engineer that the owner had, had engaged to prepare the site plan, will, will work with the township engineer, um, to, to make certain that all of the, um, the, uh, required regulations are complied with.
That was, those are my notes, that no, no parking in the driveway and the plot plan review is still required because you're going to have to deal with drainage grading
Yes, of course, yeah.
That kind of.
It's really not 100% fair that the engineer hasn't already
Yes, I know.
Given us his opinion of what the situation could be with the impervious coverage, right? We should have
Well, it's already, most of it's already there.
Yeah, 61% is there.
Yeah, well, they're asking for 68, it's not, you know. 7% of 2,000 square feet is not a lot.
I hear you.
Uh, but, but in, in general, we should make sure that they comply.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll need to comply and, um, because otherwise they'll never be able to get a building permit.
Right. Any other questions by the board? I already asked there was any other questions by the, uh, members. Do you have any other witnesses? That's it?
No.
Or anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I hear none and see none. I'm looking at this application on the surface. 14, however many, uh, variances they're looking for, it's the lot and the house is already there.
Mm-hmm.
And they're really not, you know, they're going to, they're going to actually upgrade the property and make it a more valuable piece of property. Is that a good statement?
Yeah, just as long as everybody's mindful of the impervious coverage issue around it. I, it is a slight increase, but still, as long as we have that stipulation to include the compliance with the engineer's guidance, that's fine. I mean, uh, would, that may end up translating into them reimagining the wall though, right, Chad?
Well, if it's there already, then just tie it into, it would be something the township engineer will address.
Okay.
Will we go to resolution?
Sure.
Yep.
So, application 22, colon, 39, Helix, this Anthony, six Upper Rainbow Trail, block 117, lot six, zone R3, recommend granting a sea variance to construct a new two-story single-family dwelling. Propose second-story deck, necessary retaining walls, existing first-story deck to remain, existing dock to remain, contrary to section 430-35, columns 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 13, section 430-10I, section 430-11A, uh, with the stipulation you will, uh, agree to whatever the township engineer has to say with, uh, water runoff.
Absolutely.
Second, 30. Any discussion? Laura Coleroy?
Berkowitz.
Mr. Berkowitz?
Yes, I can hear him.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Greek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Hurricane.
Yes. Results of variance is granted, will memorialize this at our next meeting, which will be in November, and we will proceed.
Good luck.
Good luck.
A lot worse on paper than it was in real life.
Picture, you come with pictures, like, that makes our town so
I mean, you know, too, it's the house next door.
Yes.
The whole picture is the two.
Yeah.
We need a five-minute break or we have
Keep going. Mr. O'Neill, application 2239. I'm sorry.
1921.
1921.
Yeah, my bad.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph O'Neill for the applicant. Uh, we have no further witnesses, but I would like to make two points before I reserve my time for after the objectors. Point number one is we will acknowledge that there is a house across Route 80 that has a historic designation. The house has a historic designation, the grounds do not. And number two, as a point of law, this matter cannot be carried into a new board in the new year. So I will be not able to extend any approvals beyond this year. So we would expect a vote this year. And with that, I would, uh, reserve my comments for after the public has had a chance to speak.
Damn it. He tried to tap it in so I can see where, on the other one?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get you guys back here. You can see, you can see us, but I can't see you for some reason.
We don't need to see us.
Yeah, we're minimized. So, Mr. Chairman, do you want the
As long as we can see it here.
All right, I got yous. I'm back.
Mr. O'Neill wants to confirm that they heard him.
Did you hear everything that he said?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, okay. Yeah, it was just a, I just lost the picture. So, um, your, your case is, you were resting at this point. So there, uh, there was an attorney for the opposition, I believe, in there?
Yes, there is, Mr. Chair, but I know that there are also any number of your citizens who have been here, uh, meeting after meeting, and I'm quite willing to defer to allow them to speak.
Well, first, my first question is who do you represent?
I represent two people, Robert and Drew Peters.
Okay.
That's all I represent. I do not represent anyone else here. I haven't conferred with them. I have nothing to do with them.
Okay, so, uh, I'm going to
Well, I wanted to be clear, they're not, they're not disguised persons.
Okay. So, uh, I'm going, I'm going to ask right now if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak in opposition to this application. Please come forward and you'll get sworn in. Come on, anybody interested? Come on forward. Don't sit there, guys. Come on up. Sit closer, we don't bark.
Bite.
Bite.
Ma'am, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Amanda Lowenstein. Amanda, A-M-A-N-D-A, Lowenstein, L-O-W-T-N-S-T-E-N.
And your residence?
I live at 320 Littleton Road, uh, in Versini.
Thank you, ma'am, you're sworn. You can have a seat, testify, just please speak into the microphone.
Just speak into the microphone, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I live across the street from
Pull the microphone closer to you.
Sorry, uh, I live across the street from the location. I live across the street from the location. In some of the research I've done, these things may require fans in order to operate the electronics. These fans can be noisy and very difficult. I have a dental practice that's also a home. I live there with my son, who is two years old. I already have enough lighting from power mill towing coming into my home. This thing would be not only an eyesore, but an extreme amount of light that will keep both me and my son up. It will make it very difficult for us to live here, function here, and I'm sure not very good for my patients either. As well as those fans will be very noisy, that can actually harm their hearing. So, there will be people coming in and out, but I will be living there, and so will my son, and other people in the neighborhood that will also be living right near there could also get harmed to their hearing as well. So, and I'm sure that the lighting is not going to be very good for their eyesight and for the rest, but I can look into that as well for you, if needed.
Anybody have any questions on this witness? Mr. O'Neill, you have any questions? No questions. Thank you. Next person?
Sir, raise your right hand. You swear or affirm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
Ready.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Glenn Suponis, G-L-E-N-C-E-P-O-N-I-S.
And your residence?
Woodbury, New Jersey.
I'm sorry?
Woodbury, New Jersey.
Woodbury, New Jersey.
I am a historic preservation specialist with the New Jersey Historic Trust. I have been with the Historic Trust for over 18 years, have been in the field of historic preservation for over 32 years. In addition to managing Historic Trust grants, I'm also reporting for the Historic Preservation easement program. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'll leave this brief. I'm here, though, to speak about the impact of the construction of the sign will have on the Livingston Benedict House at 25 Percival Road, a property that the Historic Trust holds a partial interest in through a preservation easement. For those of you not familiar with the Historic Trust or State Agency, established in '67, located within the Department of Community Affairs, mission of the Historic Trust is to advance historic preservation in New Jersey for the benefit of future generations through education, stewardship, and financial investment programs, save our heritage and our cultural strength in our communities. The two things I want to briefly, and this will be brief, I know there's a three-minute limit, so, two things I want to briefly discuss are the significance of the Livingston Benedict property and the historic preservation easement held by the Historic Trust. First, the significance of the Livingston Benedict House, associated with two federal programs, the National Register of Historic Places, and the Historic American Building Survey. The Livingston Benedict House was listed in the New Jersey Register of Historic Places and National Register of Historic Places in 1973. This was fairly early in the National Register program, suggesting the significance of the property was already known back then by the Historic Preservation Office. Property was determined to be significant for its architecture, and secondly, was determined significant for its associations with William Livingston, New Jersey's first governor. The National Register noted that the properties of statewide significance, which is a higher level of significance, did a more typical local designation. The property's significance was recognized even earlier in 1933 by the Historic American Building Survey. This federal program is also selective in which properties were chosen and documented, further highlighting its significance. These documents for these two programs are held in Washington at the National Archives and Library of Congress, respectively. As I mentioned earlier, one of the New Jersey Historic Trust's goals is long-term stewardship of historic properties. One way we fulfill this mission is through our professional easement program. Historic Trust holds approximately 30 professional easements across the state, has held the deed of preservation easement on the Livingston Benedict property for over 22 years. The purpose of the program is to provide long-term protection to historic properties. This is done in part through restricting unsympathetic and incompatible alterations to the building and property. Easement restricts additional building on the site, and even restricts installation of unnecessary above-ground utility lines, and illuminated signage, among other restrictions. The restrictions are in place to help minimize, maintain the historic character of the property, and to extend possible, maintain the property's overall setting and sightlines. The Historic Trust strongly opposes activities that diminish a property's integrity. It is this trust opinion that opposed billboard through its size, height, illumination, and location negatively impacts this historic property, and diminishes the qualities that contribute to its significance. Furthermore, it's my opinion that if this project was evaluated under Section 106 of National Historic Preservation Act, it would be determined to be an adverse visual effect to the Livingston Benedict House. The Historic Trust has worked to help protect this property for a long time, and thought the issue important enough to attend this meeting tonight. Again, I thank you for your time.
Sir, just for the record, you're an employee of the state?
Yes, I'm an employee of the state of the New Jersey Historic Trust.
And you quoted a section, I didn't get that, that you think it's a...
Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act.
Section 106?
Yes.
Did you say that there's property, you represent property that is within the...
We hold a preservation easement on the Livingston Benedict property, so that's...
Which is across Route 8?
Correct.
On kind of fronts on Littleton Road?
On Percival.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Percival Road, yeah.
Across the highway from there.
Right, okay. Any questions by the board? Thank you for your presence. Any members of the public have any questions? Mr. O'Neill, you have a question? I have no questions, thank you. Good evening.
Sir, I'm Joseph O'Neill, I represent the applicant. You're familiar with the file on this house? The historic designation specifically that was issued?
The National Register designation?
Yes.
Or the Historic Preservation Act?
Either.
Yes.
The house itself is designated for its historic significance. The architecture?
Architecture, as well as...
And the occurrence, occurrence is there, it's left there, whatever.
It's significant.
It's a little more than that. But it's an interesting story, and if you're not familiar with it, you should check it out. But specifically excluded from that was the grounds, wasn't it? The grounds had been modified, therefore they were not granted historic designation?
To be honest with you, I'd have to check to see that.
Do you have the file here? Would you like to check? It's only a page, three maybe.
Here it comes. It's up behind you.
This is like you talked about the National Registry of Designations.
Okay, if you're interested, ease it.
Yeah. Well, they do mention that the grounds are not covered because of modification to
the outstructures, don't they?
I've not seen that, but perhaps...
All right, but do you have an easement preserving the...
Did he find what you were talking about?
No.
So, you couldn't find it?
I did not see it, no.
On page one, category, it's checked building, not site, structure, or anything. It's private building, occupied, accessible to the public, it is restricted access. We're on page one, right?
Well, it's not called out as a separate either object, structure, or site, but typically when a building is listed on the National or State Register, includes the full property. If it's a district, they would then say whether it contributes or doesn't contribute, which they don't go into here. But it's not being, I mean, they're listing, the way the National Register works is that they list the either buildings, structures, objects, or site overall.
Well, a site.
They're not saying the landscape is significant enough.
If I wanted to put a billboard in the middle of the battlefield of Gettysburg, I wouldn't be able to do that, because the site, right?
But that's, it's being listed specifically only for the site.
But this is listed only for the structure.
Now, it includes the whole...
The full site?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you contend that your easement crosses Route 80 and goes into the property where the billboard is?
Yeah.
Do you think Route 80 has an impact on the house?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions from members of the public? I'm sorry, yes, sure. Phil Rosenberg, attorney for the objectors, Robert and Julie Peterson. And I asked off mic, and now on mic, if the witness has a copy of the historic trust that he has referenced.
The easement, yes.
Yes. Pardon me, the title is "New Jersey Historic Trust: Historic Preservation and Conservation Easement." Do you have a copy of that?
Yes, I do.
All right. Can I see it, please? Because I have plenty. All right. Aside from the fact that it has recording marks, it appears to be the same thing that I have. Mr. Chair, for what it's worth, I do have multiple, multiple copies of this easement.
Are you going to mark that as...
I would like to mark it, and also I can, if the board cares to, I can distribute it to members of the board, because I'm going to be asking the witness to read not lengthy, but a few passages.
So, it would be O, objective?
O, one?
O, one.
Okay. So, may we mark the one with your, with the recording information? Do you need that?
I can print another one.
Okay. So, with today's date?
Yeah.
10/19.
All right. Mr. O'Neill, do you have the easement?
I don't have the witness.
Okay. Again, Mr. Chair, I ask if you would like me to hand these out to the board. Sure, sure. It'll be fine. I'll hand it out to them. Okay. I don't know if I can point it out. No shit. No. Yeah, but I can share. Sir, I'm not going to ask you the same questions that Mr. O'Neill did. I want to refer you to specific portions of this easement. I'm going to refer you and the board to, beginning at page two, there is a numbered paragraph one at the bottom of page two, is there not? It says grantor's obligations?
Yes.
All right. And could you flip over to page three, then? And for the record, could you please read aloud, none of these is long, could you please read aloud paragraph D?
Grantors shall not conduct landfill dumping, including wetland filling, or placing ashes, trash, rubbish, manure, or other unsightly or offensive materials, except for the purpose of combating erosion, or flooding, or agriculture on the property, free for maintenance and/or construction of permitted structures, all consistent with the preservation and conservation purposes of this easement.
Could you read paragraph E immediately below her?
Grantors shall not cut, remove, or destroy trees, shrub, or other vegetation now or later existing unless consistent with the preservation and conservation purposes of this easement. New vegetation shall be appropriate historic preservation in quality, form, and color. Grantors shall maintain trees, shrubs, and lawns in good manner and appearance, and perform to be what's good for agricultural and forestry practices.
And I just have two more. Could you read F, please, immediately below that?
Grantors shall not conduct or permit otherwise, allow others to conduct activities on the property which would be, would or may be determined detrimental to drainage, flood control, water conservation, erosion control, or the preservation or conservation purposes of this easement.
And then finally, at the very bottom of the page, there's a K. It begins without trust's prior written approval, grantor shall not, and then could you go to number two?
Make any topographical changes to the property, including but not limited to service or subservice mining, drilling, excavation, removal, or other extraction activities, including but not limited to underground slant mining and drilling, or topsoil sand, gravels, downrocks, minerals, peat, loam, petroleum, natural gas, or other materials for commercial or not commercial use or sale, except as necessary, or to carry out any activity expressly committed herein. For the purpose of combating erosion or flooding, for agriculture on the property, and for the maintenance and/or construction of permitted structures, all consistent with preservation and conservation purposes of this easement.
The four clauses that I've had you read, D, E, F, and K, too, are those all consistent with maintaining the historical integrity of the property?
I mean, with condition on the property, I mean, some things may have changed over time, so, I mean, it's maintaining. It's not changing the property to then affect, I guess, its historic character.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you. Any other member of the public who wishes to speak in opposition to this application, please come forward.
Ma'am, could you state, raise your right hand, you swear or affirm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Nancy Brighton, B-R-I-G-H-T-O-N. Didn't need my address. 24 Maplewood Drive. I'm also the chair of the Parsonny Historic Preservation Committee, as well as a historic preservation professional for 30 years, unfortunately. Okay, so, for the town attorney, Section 106 can be found under 50 United States Code 306101, with implementing regulations of 36, Code of Federal Regulations 802. With regards to Mr. O'Neill's use of the National Register designations, building refers literally to building. There are labels that you are required to fill out on the form. Building refers to, if it's a building. Site does not refer to the surrounding land. Site refers to land without a building, or to an archaeological site. The National Register form from 1973, when this building was listed, is a completely different form than the form we would do today. If this had to go through a Section 106 review, the boundaries, the land, the house, everything associated with that current property would be considered as a historic property. With regards to Route 80, what we're talking about are cumulative effects to historic properties, which are the incremental effects that a project will have when added to other past, present, or reasonably foreseeable actions, regardless of which agency or person undertakes the action. Cumulative effects can result from individually minor, but collectively significant actions over a period of time. Cumulative effects can be adverse to the integrity of a historic property, which are location, design, materials, association, they're all defined within the National Register bulletins that describe the process. They're all directly related to this historic structure and its ability to convey its significance, its relationship to the 18th century construction and use and association with its historic person in New Jersey during the Revolutionary War. With regards to Route 80, so when Route 80 was built, it was built in the early days after the Section 106 process, 1966 was the National Historic Preservation Act. So, when Route 80 is put in, there are different ways, we have evolved in the way we do the process, evaluate historic properties, and consider adverse effects to those historic properties. So, what you see on Route 80 now, when you see the walls, when you see the vegetation lift up, those are ways in which the federal highways, the state and New Jersey DOT, made attempts to minimize and mitigate the adverse effects of sticking Route 80 within that corridor and impacted that historic property. And that's where a lot of, you know, a lot of properties, if you go along Route 80, Route 80 is along the face of a valley, that is where a lot, Patterson, everything, they had to do, whether they did archaeology, or documentation of buildings that were being demolished prior to the construction of Route 80, or they tried to construct by leaving vegetation barriers, the minimal amount of, they would do that to minimize adverse effects. Over time, other things have been added. Everybody always says, well, you put Route 80 in, so obviously it doesn't matter. It still does matter. As you go with each one of those, they're like, it becomes the straw that broke the camel's back. Which one is going to finally send it over the edge? Adding a billboard here with that light, with that visual intrusion, is a big impact. It is a small island of history. The township recognizes as such, it has that little, what is it, Governor Livingston, little park when you come off of Percival Boulevard. park when you come off of Parsippany Boulevard there. It's structured such that we have looked to maintain that property as the historic property it is.
Wait, 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 wait. Any questions of this witness? Mr. O'Neil, any questions? No, no thank you, no questions. Any members of the public have any questions, sir? Nope? Okay.
Sir, if you could raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the boards to yourself, you got?
I do.
And for the record, could you please state and spell your name?
Randy Tortorello, R-A-N-D-Y-T-O-R-T-O-R-L-O. I am president of the--
And you live in Parsippany, your address?
I live in Parsippany, one eighty-Fundin Drive.
Thank you, sir.
And I am the president of Parsippany Historical and Preservation Society, which I have been for the past twenty-five years, mainly because no one else wants to do it, or has the knowledge. So here's your history lesson for the evening. We've heard from several residents about the importance of this historic house and property, but I reiterate, the buildings on this piece of land, I feel, are the most important in our township. We speak today about the importance of our veterans, or we do ignore the veterans who came before. The men who lived on this property and in these buildings were vital to the future of America. Lemuel Bowers, who first owned the property, was a captain in the local militia during the Revolutionary War, keeping the residents safe and secure. The longest-serving governor, William Livingston, was forced to leave his home in Elizabeth Town with his family, and sought refuge here from British troops from seventeen seventy-six to seventeen eighty. During his tenure, his daughter Sarah married John Jett, the American patriot who became the first chief justice of the United States and governor of New York. Thomas Osborne, another owner, was a colonel during the Revolutionary War. His family was also vital to the township, serving in the local government during their tenure. It's very easy to forget the people who came before us, but I'm here to remind you. The township owes the families, including the current one, protection from sources willing to ignore the facts I've stated. Long after we're gone, these edifices will be here, thanks to the support of concerned citizens, our neighbors. I've been in town for my entire sixty-seven years, and my family has lived here since the nineteen thirties. We remember when Parsippany Road passed in front of these homes, and imagined what life was like in the past, and how we could protect such remarkable pieces of history. Today, the historical community wants to celebrate the history of this site. We have had reenactments on the property, and plan to have more in the future. Once again, we can bring our schoolchildren and residents to experience how our country began, and how important it is to ensure our history is not forgotten. You can stand in front of these buildings and imagine yourself in the past, erecting a sign regardless of size will preclude this from happening. Thank you.
Any questions of this witness? Mr. O'Neil, you have any questions? No, thank you, no questions. Any members of the public have any questions? Thank you. Randy. Any other members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application? Don't wait, come on.
Ma'am, could you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the boards to yourself, you got?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Betty Wyka, W-Y-K-A.
And your address, please, ma'am?
One Bennett Court. We're number one, Parsippany, New Jersey.
Thank you, ma'am. You can have a seat and please speak.
Hi. I don't come with any historical association cred, although I fully appreciate and respect Parsippany's history and the Livingston-Mennetick property. As a thirty-year resident of Parsippany, I was driving down Route 80 when they were doing the crane test, which kind of shows, you know, they hang the thing off the crane to show you where it's gonna, the impact it's gonna have on the area. And I was horrified. It's not consistent with what the neighborhood should be. There's residents there, it shows you how high and where you can see it from, and I just, as a resident, I don't feel it's consistent with the area, certainly the impact on the property across the way. And the neighbors that live in the hills of Troy don't deserve to have that there either. Thank you.
Any questions of this witness?
I have a question. When was that crane test?
Yeah, I agree.
We seem to be the only one that saw it.
Oh.
Or maybe somebody else saw it.
That was, it was months ago.
It was being notified.
It was when?
Unfortunately--
April sixth.
Fortunately, we weren't notified.
Wasn't it part of what we talked about last time we were here with this? Letting us know when that was gonna happen?
Yeah.
Any other questions of this witness? Thank you, Betty.
You're welcome.
Any other members of the public who wish to speak in opposition?
Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the boards to yourself, you got?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name?
Mark Peterson, M-A-R-K-P-E-T-E-R-S-N.
And your address, sir?
Twenty-six O'Leary Street.
Thank you, sir. You're sworn, you can have a seat.
I recognize the historic nature of the property, but it's not what I'm here to speak about. I live in the neighborhood. I also saw the crane test, and I can tell you from, I drove around the hills of Troy, and you could see it for blocks, for blocks, like, all the way over to the playground. It was pretty shocking. What I'm here to talk about is, as a resident of that neighborhood, one of my concerns is Route 80, there's a lot of accidents in that section of Route 80, and I'm personally concerned for our first responders in Parsippany that have to go down there and deal with that. It's already a dangerous stretch of road, and it seems to me that adding a giant distraction to a major highway interchange where there's already a lot of accidents, and I mean, anecdotal, that's anecdotal, I don't have numbers on that, I just hear them out my window, seems hazardous and scary. And the second thing is that I have a family, I live at that address, and the billboard will shine in our bedroom window. And it really seems like putting a structure like that in what is a residential neighborhood. I know that, I was at the previous hearings, and I tried to understand the testimony, that that's a commercial tract where they're putting it, but on the other side of that street is the hills of Troy. And on the other side of Route 80 is a residential neighborhood, which is becoming more residential as they make land effects into a residential community as well. And it seems like putting a lit billboard in the middle of a Parsippany residential community just seems wrong to me, as somebody who lives here, and has raised my family here.
When you, when you saw that sign from the various aspects of the neighborhood, forgive me, I don't know when that was, were there leaves on the trees?
There were leaves on the trees. And I could tell you that you could see, there's a building, you could see it well over the four-story building, like, on all the approaches. I took, took an hour off work that morning to drive around, I even drove out on the highway.
Were you made aware that it was gonna be that day, or just accidentally saw it?
I was driving to work, sir. You wouldn't be able to miss it if you were driving past.
But you didn't get any formal notification?
No, no. No, I was driving to work. I was going over the overpass out towards, out towards forty-six. But, you know, upon the overpass--
I wonder why they wasted their time in even doing it?
Couldn't tell you.
If nobody could-- What's that?
To check a box, that they did it?
Check a box, yep.
Yeah, I couldn't tell you, sir.
Yep, yep, yep.
What time in the morning did you see it? Seven thirty to eight?
I, yeah, it might have been a little later that day.
Eight thirty-nine?
Eight thirty-nine, maybe. It was, it was, it was morning time, though, for sure, because I wouldn't have been, I wouldn't have been around there in the middle of the day.
Any other questions by the board? Mr. O'Neil, you have any questions? No, thank you. Any members of the public have any questions? Nope. Okay. Any other members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application?
Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the boards to yourself, you got?
Yes, sir.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name?
Nicholas Homyak, H-O-M-Y-A-K.
And, sir, your address?
Twenty-six Onideth Avenue, Lake High Line.
I should know that by heart.
I'd like to speak against it because it violates at least three master plan goals, and I'll cut it short, aesthetic, character, neighborhood stability, incompatibility, maintaining community features, and there, there, the term site, I'd like to read something from a priority agenda enhancing the climate resilience of America's resources. It's, it was from an executive order in two thousand fourteen. It does include historical resources. And the term landscape scale can represent many different spatial scales depending on the resource value being managed. For the purpose of this report, a landscape is defined as a large area encompassing an interacting mosaic of ecosystems, human systems, that are characterized by a set of intersecting management concerns. That's where the master plan kicks in. The landscape is not defined by the size of the area, but rather by the interacting elements that are meaningful to the management objectives. Often, it is practical to think of landscape as a relatively bounded area or unit that has a functional as well as a visual and cultural coherence. So if you're standing on this historic ground, our first elected governor, close friend of George Washington, all kinds of early American famous people, the Ogden's were there, you're gonna be on this four-and-a-half acres that remains, and you're gonna see an advertising sign, an invasion of privacy, a badgering, we have spam, advert, you can't do anything in this country without being badgered by someone trying to sell you something. We're not even considered citizens anymore, we're considered consumers. So I would say, no community-minded or patriotic person in their right mind, be they developer or not, or corporate, would pick this site. It's just, it's wrong. And President Eisenhower himself, who started all these interstate highway systems, I watched a C-SPAN book TV with his daughter, and the great anxiety that he had was what these interstate highways, when they were starting to put up the billboards, he said they was ruining the beauty of the American landscape, and he was very disturbed by that. And that's what, that's what has happened. So we let one sign go in, and then what are we gonna have, a bazaar up there of advertising signs? And what are they trying to do? They're trying to brainwash you to buy something that you really don't need. So it's, it's just-- Standpoint, standpoint, okay. Yeah, well, it's, it's a pretty big-- Let's keep-- Advertising is deceptive-- Not, not germane to this application.
We're not--
It's an advertising sign, is it not? Just talk about the sign, let's not talk about-- All right. The sign is, if you're on that landscape, not just in the house, and you're there for a little historical perspective or to enjoy the day, you're gonna be invaded and intruded by this sign. And your master plan goals, number one, eleven, and twelve, it's right there. It violates those, those three things. Thank you. So, yeah, I don't wanna get too deep into the weeds about advertising, so I'll leave it at that. Any questions of this witness?
No.
Any members of the public, Mr. O'Neil, anybody? Anybody? Nobody? Okay. Anybody else? We done?
Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the boards to yourself, you got?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name?
Randolph Glawaki, G-L-W-A-C-K-I.
And your residence?
Twenty-three Westminster Drive.
Thank you, sir. You're sworn, you have a seat.
Well, I'm not gonna be here to talk about the regulations of this sign. I'm here to speak to you as close as you can get to a Parsippany native. I've lived here for sixty-six years of my sixty-nine years, so I drove my bike around this area all the time, and I saw the legacy of what happened in Parsippany, which was a lot of burning and bulldozing. A lot of historic properties disappeared under the bulldozers and the gun burn. I took a ride the other day down Julia Peterson Street there on Old Parsippany Road, which I used to go through all the time before Route 80 was actually built, and I parked my car there and looked across the street at where the sign is gonna be, and it's clearly gonna be an invasion on her property and her visual, her visual project of the, of the sign. Parsippany doesn't need more commercialization, we've got plenty of it already, and to put something like this right by a historic property and to have visual pollution is what's gonna happen. I just wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
No.
Mr. O'Neil? No? Thank you. Any other members of the public? Please come forward.
Yes.
Make it short, because this is your second time.
I appreciate it.
And just for the record, ma'am, your name again?
Amanda Lowenstein.
Thank you, ma'am.
My apologies, I forgot to bring a different point, but I don't think other people have actually brought up. So I live on that corner, and there've been, Warren Stinger could probably tell you a lot more of this, because he's done the research. There's a lot of car accidents that happen on that corner, for a lot of different reasons. There's a lot of traffic right on that area that I live, right on that corner, but also on that highway going, right on Littleton Road. So, right next to that sign, there's a ton of traffic, and there's also, it's impossible on my corner to make a left turn because of blockage. So now we have the blockage, we have that, but we also have a lot of new residential buildings being added to the area as well.
What effect-- You're losing me here--
My concern is--
Because you're talking about traffic, and we're talking about the sign that's gonna face Route 80.
Agreed. I'm concerned that this sign is going to also affect people, it's gonna distract people. There are gonna be even more car accidents, there's a school bus that can't even see enough to do a left turn, and that's actually been proven by specialists. And now we're gonna add more school buses, more port, more kids on these things, our children, and that school bus is gonna be distracted by that, and so are all the other people driving. There's already enough traffic on that spot, it's terrible to get out on that area.
I--
For the people's safety is what I'm asking for.
I think you're off-base here in your testimony, really. I'm sorry to say. We're not dealing with traffic here, we're dealing with a sign that faces Route 80 at sixty feet up in the air.
It is right next to my property.
Thank you.
We would be able to see it every fifteen seconds.
Thank you. Any questions by the board? The attorney, Mr., you, are you, are you gonna have a witness?
I have to witness.
That's a witness. Any other members of the public?
Sir, raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the boards to yourself, you got?
Sure.
And for the record, could you state your name?
The Rain Patel, I'm a next-door neighbor--
And how do you spell your first name?
The Rain, spelled B-H-I-R-E-N.
Patel.
Last name is Patel.
And your address?
Two eighty-one Littleton Road.
Thank you, sir.
You're sworn. Good fellow restaurant property. So I'm the next-door neighbor. Thank you. I'm against the sign proposal of putting the sign, because Powdermill, going company already violating the site plan, they have removed the buffer zone, which township, when I came to the township for my project approval, you guys asked me to plant the trees between my property and Powdermill, which I spent sixty thousand dollars on site plan and plant the tree. Now, every day, they are banging that tree and breaking that tree. Not only that, they paved that landscaping area on their side, so now all snow--
Can I just, can I just start at this point? You sound like you have valid issues, but this is not the place that's gonna solve the trees getting knocked over or the pavement.
No, no, I'm coming to the point--
You have to go to the administration, you have to go to the zoning--
You have to go to the zoning with...
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement. Go to code enforcement. That has no bearing on the sign.
I'm coming to the point that sign will add the congestion to the property site plan. It's not removing any congestion. So now, it's going to create more congestion, because they're going to put more trucks towards on our side, and sign is only distraction and devaluing my property. You know, the reason I...
So your concern is the two uses on that one piece of property?
Yes. And not only that, having 60-foot sign, God forbid, if anything happens, it's going to increase my insurance, and it's going to damage my property, it can lean on my side. And not only that, creating a distraction and devaluing the property, adding sign not going to bring the value of the neighborhood. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
Any questions of this witness? Any members of the public? Mr. O'Neill? Nobody? Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public?
Thank you. Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony about to give before the board's true self, you got? And for the record, could you please state and spell your name?
Tim Kelly. T-I-M-K-E-L-L-Y.
And your address?
Three Noble Street, N-O-B-L-A, Parsony.
Thank you, sir. You're sworn, just speaking to the microphone.
I oppose the sign. I first want to say thank you for the members of the town who did come up and speak about their proposal to the sign. Being that I live in the neighborhood, I'm roughly five houses down. I came to Parsony as a family, because I liked the area. Unfortunately, the area that I live in, it's high-congested. I'm right on the edge of the road for Littleton, so I get a lot of traffic coming in there. So now with the sign and more traffic coming on, I'm just opposed that if they see the sign, the next exit, they're going to come and turn off to that exit to go to the gas station. On top of that, we're talking a variance, we're talking zoning. So the sign needs to be put up based on the approval of the board here. Rules are put into place for a reason. Granted, things are changing, times are changing, things change in society, but still, the sign should not be put there, because the town is changing. The town is ranked as one of the top towns to be living in the country, and by putting a sign up here, we're kind of changing the parameters of what this town is, based on the master plan that was spoken earlier. At what point does it, does it stop, or does it just keep on moving forward? We have more construction going on, more signs going on. So hopefully, the board sees this and understands this and recognizes this, and does not agree to the sign.
Thank you. Any questions of this witness? Mr. O'Neill? Nobody? Thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay, I think you're up.
One more.
My name is Evelyn Jacobson.
Could you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony about to give before the board's true self, you got?
I live in Nine Princess Street, right down from three thirty-three Littleton Road.
You have to speak into the microphone.
Okay. I've been sitting so long, my legs, legs gave out. No, I have watched Powder Mill grow from a garage to an absolute junkyard now, and the sign in back of it is ugly, and I can see it every time I go out, I try. And I also have a question as a lawyer. He kept saying it's going to benefit Parsony. I see no benefit to Parsony at all. It's just making it uglier. My two children, when they got married, they moved out of Parsony because they saw what was happening to it. And I've been there since 1961. But I think it's just, it's just another damage to our street. That's it.
Any questions of this witness?
No.
Mr. O'Neill? No? Thank you. Any other members of the public? I think we've got everybody already, haven't we? Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, since you asked, I have two. As a fact witness, Mrs. Peterson, and I do have a professional member here.
Okay.
No, no, we're doing it. And, but I am aware of the attention and time that this board has already put in on this matter, and I will do my best to...
Ma'am...
I would like to finish this case tonight. I would like to...
Ma'am, if you raise your right hand, you swear, you can swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board's true self, you got?
I did.
And for the record, could you please state and spell your name?
Julia Peterson, J-U-L-I-A-P-E-T-R-S-O-N.
And your residence?
Twenty-five Old Parsony Road.
All I ask is if there's testimony already given that this witness is going to repeat, you take it from there, okay?
All right.
Same with your planner. I mean, you know, I don't know how much time you've allotted for your planner. But we're going to go until we finish this tonight, okay?
It is true, Mr. Chair, that some people have already addressed facts that Mrs. Peterson will address, but she does live in the house.
I understand that. If she can verify the facts, that would be fine, okay? But we've heard it already.
No one more than me would love to be done with this, believe me.
Well, then, let's just start that part.
Okay.
Before we get to specific facts, please advise the board how you view this application.
Okay, well, I'm completely opposed to it. I've been in Parsony since I was born. I've been in and out of Parsony, but I live and take care of the Livingston Benedict House with my husband. Five generations of my family have worked to preserve this house, which is now 270 years old. So it was here before the United States started. And it's always been a kind of a point of pride that it was the governor's house. But believe me, an old house needs people living in it to be preserved. And if the surrounding area becomes compromised, it will be very hard to get people to live there.
Let me ask you in this respect, you live in the house, correct?
Yep.
Are you on a salary? Are you paid for living in the house?
No, 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 no.
It's just your house.
It's our house.
And at some point, you and your husband will move out of it.
Yep.
And at some point, you will need a buyer.
Right.
And that will have to be a buyer who is willing to preserve the house.
Yes, because there's an easement on it. It's an easement on the title, on the deed. It's preserved in perpetuity. So a buyer that is willing to live there is very important.
All right. Now, I'll tell you what. In trying to pay heed to the chairman's request of us, let's skip the history, which I think has been covered.
Yeah.
And instead, could you talk about your house as living history, as it were?
Well, people come down the street almost daily in their cars. Many of them get out, take a picture. People always say, "It's so nice to come down here, because it feels like an old place." We have had events at our house, the total attendance, I think, is over 3,000 people. And as Mr. Tortorello said, we're hoping to do more.
What type of events have you had?
Well, with Girl Scouts, they had costumes, and we had 30 or 40 costume volunteers doing colonial crafts. We've had Girl Scout troops visit, Boy Scout troops visit, school groups visit, and people portraying people who've lived there in the past.
Did COVID put a damper on that?
Oh, yes, obviously.
And you are hoping that now you'll be able to reach these activities?
Yes, yes. And people use the Governor Livingston Park, which is right next door, and would be impacted in the winter. I mean, we're talking two conditions here, but during the winter, you can see the sign from the park. People use that park to take pictures. They sit there. Sometimes we let people come on our property and take wedding pictures, graduation pictures. We've been very open about making it feel somewhat public.
Speaking about pictures, you do have some photographs?
I do, I do.
All right.
You're going to mark these O2?
Yes. I can mark them collectively, or I can mark them separately.
You can mark them collectively. They're all, they're stapled together?
Okay, yeah, well, this is pairs of pictures, and I have big, and they can just pass that down. The first one I'm going to address is this one, this set, the set that's on top.
Okay, well, hold on. Pardon me?
Yeah. They're in the same thing.
Is this large, okay, the large poster board?
Large poster board.
Is it included in these pictures?
Yes, it is. So maybe I can...
You'll mark that as O2 council, the...
Okay.
We can mark this O2, the big one?
There's, there are about enough for everybody there, I think. And I don't know if people in the public... Okay. So, the first picture is...
Do you want to stand up?
Yeah, sure. Is it on?
Council will mark O1 and O2.
It's on, okay.
I'm sorry, O2 and O3, O2 and O3.
Okay, O2 has the brown border, and this is a picture of, from the tow yard, our And without any, I didn't use any weird lenses or anything. I stood in the tow yard in the picture of our house.
I was wondering why it had all those damaged cars.
Yeah. I'm sorry, some of them weren't hotter. Okay, this is a picture of, from our backyard, looking across Route 80. This shows the location of the sign. This also shows the location of the sign from our bedroom window, actually, this is shot. And this shows, this is 399 Littleton Road. This is where the sign is. The sign will be taller than 399 Littleton Road. A lot of this vegetation you see actually is on the state highway property. And about every 25 years, they come and cut it all down. So it isn't really protected. We've started trying to grow some more trees, but the trees that are on our property are probably 70 to 150 years old. So you don't grow a tree overnight. Okay, so that's that one. That's the view shed we're talking about. You know, somebody is parked on our street saying, "Oh, the 18th century." Well, they have to just look over, you know, they would be right there, and they can look and see the tow yard and the sign. Okay. All right, this is...
And if you say this, you're now referring to O3.
O3, okay, with a green border, if you're looking at it in the audience. A picture, this is, says, "The historic character of this property is protected by the New Jersey Historic Trust." The easement does include the whole site. We are very restricted in what we can do. We can't erect any new buildings. We can't change the exteriors of any of the buildings. Anyhow, that's that. This is the Morris County Heritage marker that's in front.
By the way, may I interrupt you? Again, when you're saying this...
Yeah.
You are pointing to a picture, a picture on the upper left of O3. And for those of you who may not have memorized the master plan, may I point out that an almost identical picture appears on page 74 of the master plan.
Okay, now, this is the house that's across the street from our house. It's older than our house. So the date on our house is 1752, but nobody... This house is probably older. It has a rubble basement. It has a Rumford fireplace, a cooking fireplace. Some people speculate it was the out kitchen of our house, but it is also at least as old as our house.
Does someone live there?
Huh?
Does someone live there?
Yeah. It's a residence. This is looking south. This is the site. And when the New Jersey Historic Trust accepted this easement, they specified that the site, that we had to preserve the site, because that gives context to the building. Okay, so this is our barn. This is an 1880 barn. Across the street, we have a 1700s barn, which we are, and this is an outhouse, which we just had reconstructed. Now, this is a shot from one of our bedroom windows. I can read a book in this room now with the lighting from Powder Mill Towing. So you can see that it's going to be a little even brighter with the sign. Okay, that's the bottom, what, bottom left? I don't know. Anyhow, those are the...
I just have a question. The lights that are in that picture, are they just from the yard of the property the sign is supposed to be?
This one, I believe, is the yard, because there's the white sign. There are highway signs, but the highway signs are pointed down. Powder Mill Towing is about 25 to 30 feet off of Route 80 to begin with.
So that light is basically just a stanchion for the parking lot, like a 20-foot...
Powder Mill Towing is lit all night. I mean, it's lit all night. Okay.
Do you have any other pictures, or is that it?
That's it.
All right, so why don't you sit down again?
Okay. Quickly, quickly dash through.
Again, so you've entered the historic aspect, as have other witnesses, and can you just advise the board how you are living in the house, you expect to be impacted by this unseizing billboard?
Well, I really feel like it's somebody putting a very large TV in my bedroom, because it's there, it's going to have rotating messages. And, I mean, I have curtains in that room, but the room's on the north side of the house. You aren't going to be, you can't avoid seeing the light from this. Okay.
So one more thing.
Yeah.
Have you calculated or compared the size of the billboard to the size of the front of your house?
Yeah, the billboard is bigger than the front of our house. Or would be.
Is there anything you'd like to add to the points that you've already made?
I, it's interesting, because many people say, "Well, Route 80 is there, so why do you care?" I mean, it's true, Route 80 isn't ideal. It's noisy, dirty, everything else. I don't think that gives anybody an excuse to make it uglier than it already is.
And more intrusive.
And more intrusive, and more intrusive. And for people who do value coming down and pretending that they're in history, it will definitely detract from the viewscape of the house.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Any questions by the board?
I just have one quick one. On the top-left picture here on the brown border sign, Route 80 is right behind those vehicles, and that's across Route 80 you're shooting from?
Well, yeah, the house is across Route 80.
Right, right. But you're standing in, you're standing at Powder Mill...
Powder Mill Towing.
So it looks that close, okay.
You're on the westbound side of 80, shooting across to your house.
I am.
Yeah, okay.
Mrs. Peterson, you have a, you have a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful house. It's just, it's really amazing. I appreciate your testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions of this witness? Mr. O'Neill? Nothing? Thank you.
Let's call my second and final witness, who's a professional planner. Mr. King, if you want to do the credentials?
She just has to, she has to climb her way over the O2 and O3.
We're not using...
Ma'am, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear and/or affirm the testimony you're going to give before the board's true self, you got?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Yes, my name is Dohal. The last name is spelled H-O-L-M-Q-V-I-S-T. My business address is 110 Chesnut Ridge Road, Suite 192, Montville, New Jersey, 07645.
And you're, and you're a planner?
Yes, I am. I'm the CEO and founder of Preferred Planning Group. That's a firm I started in 2018. I'm licensed by the state of New Jersey.
And all those licenses are in full force and effect? And you've been qualified either before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have 37 years of consulting experience. I've been licensed over 30 years.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chairman, the witness has been qualified in planning.
Thank you, Mr. King. Thank you, Mr. King. Okay, I'll wait until you sit down, or are you planning to stand?
You can start. I will start.
All right. First, could you, just in a general sense, advise the board what you have done, what steps you took in order to be able to present testimony today?
All right, sure. Well, we reviewed the application that's before you. I went out to the site. I've been inside the historic homes that you heard testimony about. I've been around the grounds. I've been all over the general neighborhood, both sides of Route 80. I've looked at your master plan, your zoning regulations, and based on that, I have conclusions to offer you on the merits of this application.
Okay, which we're going to get to. So first, do you wish to describe the subject property just as a predicate for your testimony?
Yeah, I'm going to have four exhibits that I'm going to show you. They are 24 by 36. We will happily provide PDFs for the township file. So I'm going to start with that. I'm going to explain, um, first.
That'd be O4?
O4.
Can't mark it on the back. So could, could you begin, please, by describing what O4 is?
Uh, that's entitled Billboard Opposition 299 Littleton Road Zoning Plan. And, uh, that's Figure 1. Prepared by my office. Can you see? I'm sorry. Are you okay? Is everybody okay? They can see clearly? Okay, thank you. So what we have done, we've taken as, as our... Mr. O'Neil, are you having a problem?
Well, sit up here, Mr. O'Neil. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah.
Is that okay, sir? Okay. Uh, so as our base map, we subscribe to, um, a, a private service called NearMap. They have the most recent aerial imagery. Uh, so that is what we used as our base. We've superimposed, um, colors representing the zone district boundaries. And we also highlighted in white, uh, the site on the opposite side of Route 80, which you can see is in the B2 zone. Um, I'll, I'll just mention that, um, the applicant's planner's report has some discrepancies in the map that they have in their report. Their map is also, in my opinion, very outdated. It's from 2019. And it does not reflect the current application. And I'll go through that in more detail through my testimony. But, um, adjoining the subject site is the O1 zone. To the west and to the east, it's B2. This is not accurately shown in the applicant's planner report. The Peterson property is directly across. It's about 234 feet from the subject site of the, the billboard application. It's on both sides of Old Parsippany Road. And what I want to really make clear to the board, because it has to do with the fact that this site is particularly not suitable for this use. Okay, we took a look at the topographic conditions, um, of this area. And that was not discussed at all by the applicant, but it's very relevant to this board's deliberations. And in my opinion, makes the site not suitable for the proposed use or the D6 height variance that is proposed and not mentioned in the applicant's planner's report. The land elevations to take note of are that Route 80 itself is at about an elevation 318. The overpass here is about 340. The, the site of the subject signage is at about 332 feet elevation. The applicant is proposing a 60-foot-high sign, bringing the total top elevation to about 392. So if we have elevation 392 here with the proposed billboard, 340 on the overpass, 370 by my client's property, I think it's rather obvious how visible this sign will be. It will be the highest elevation of anything in this area. The elevation around King Court, Noble Street, Princess is about 333. Also taking into account the park that was mentioned, which is quite a charming park. On my site visit, uh, there was some kind of celebration, cultural, uh, family celebration. I don't know if it was a wedding. It looked like very traditional, you know, close family. We're taking pictures there. Um, the elevation of that park is about 338. I also encourage the board to consider the number of stories in the buildings in the immediate area that we're showing here. To the west of us, we have a three-story building, maybe about 32-foot height, thereabouts. To the east of us, we have a one-story building. On the other side of the roadway, another one-story building. And then, of course, we have residential. A little farther east, we have Cambridge Village, which is two-story structures, multifamily. And also Troy Gardens on the north side of Littleton Road, also two stories. So we're talking about, uh, proposed structure in this sign that is, is going to be very, very noticeable, dominating the view shed. And we already were, uh, hearing from the residents about the lighting impacts and the noticeably, I'll call it, in the view shed from wherever you are in this general area. I'm going to show you a second exhibit now. I'm just going to put it over this. Okay. Uh, yeah, for, for...
Um, can I, can I ask one question before we go to that exhibit? Was all your elevation analysis only for what was pictured here? Did you go beyond the scope of that?
No.
Okay, that's fine.
What, what I showed on...
Right, okay. All right. Because this exhibit is showing...
This is the...
The close-up.
Right.
This one here. Yeah. So, um, on Figure 2, uh, area context, we took the same base map that we used for Figure 1, but we enlarged it so that you can see the relationship between my client's property on the south side of Route 80 and the towing facility with the proposed billboard. It looks a lot closer when you look from the air. And it is. As I said, it's only about 234 feet across. Route 80 is recessed in this area. Yes, you can hear the noise, but you cannot see the cars or the travel lanes when you're standing at the, um, end of the travelway on Old Parsippany Road. Some of the history that was not touched on, that I'll just mention real briefly, I'm sure the board is aware, of the 1965 Highway Beautification Act. Okay? That is why the state is controlling advertising, but requires that the applicants get municipal approval. So the local municipality can still zone areas where they see, uh, this type of use, off-premise signage, to be appropriate. And that is exactly what Parsippany has done. There was, um, some misstatements, I'll call it, earlier in the proceedings that, uh, the township does not allow this use anywhere. That is, that is not accurate. And that is another misstatement in the applicant's planning report. It has never been corrected. And that report has never been amended. And it is dated 2019.
There are, in fact, three zones where digital billboards are permitted?
That's correct. I, I just want to finish this. We have, uh, two photographs that were taken. Here, we're on the north side, um, looking at the historic property. And, um, you, you can see it highlighted there in red. And then, standing at the edge of Parsippany Road by the guardrail, where we have the letter B, and looking at, at the towing facility. And you can see, it looks very close. And it looks very close because it's at a similar elevation. The elevations I stated before were about 370 on the Peterson site and about 3, 332 on the towing. So that is why, when you look at the aerial image and when you look, uh, straight across, it looks so close. And that is because it is. 234 feet is not that far. The other distinction I want the board to take note of on this exhibit is, uh, the difference in frontage. Another reason why this structure, if approved here, uh, the billboard, is going to seem so extreme is because of the difference in frontage between the billboard site and my client's property. The billboard site has about 325 feet of frontage. And, um, the site is only 0.92 acres in total. My client's property, if you look at the entirety of it, is about 700 feet of frontage. And the total combined area is about 4.2 acres. So the view shed is going to heavily impact and negatively impact this historic, uh, site. There was, uh, testimony before regarding the historic easement. Uh, my client showed me that, that easement. It's several pages. I don't remember how many. At least 20 pages long, I think. Um, and I guess that's what was presented this evening.
O1.
Okay. So I read the entire thing. And I have to say, it's very unusual. I've been a planner for over 30 years, closer to 40 years. And I have, um, among my credentials, I have a master's in urban planning from New York University and undergrad from Rutgers. And I also hold, um, a certificate in historic preservation from Drew University. Okay, so I have worked on historic sites. I have not seen an easement, uh, that has the restrictions that this one does. And I just want to explain to you, um, what I, what I took out of it. Um, and this is just showing you again, Figure 3. Bowers Livingston Osborne Benedict House. That's the full name of, of this site.
And this is O6, correct?
Yes.
Yes. And so here we, we have the enlargement. You can really see how close, uh, the Governor Livingston Park is to the subject site. But I want you to see, you know, these structures. We have the Red Barn. There's the main house. In the state register designation, it talks about a well on the site. Then we have the secondary house here. There's another barn. The whole thing in entirety has significance and really gives you, uh, a feeling of stepping back in time when you're there, if you ignore the noise of Route 80. But we can't change that. So the most prominent stipulations in this easement agreement that I, that I took note of, as being quite, quite extensive and quite unusual, is that it, it precludes any demolition on this property. It requires a preservation of visual characteristics of the site. It requires that the vegetation and lawn areas maintain their quality, form, and color. Very, very specific there. No compromise to the historic or architectural character. We heard from the historic experts about the impacts of, of this visual affront to the character, um, and the cultural resource that you, that you have here. The easement precludes subdivision of this property. It also states that there cannot be any topographic changes to the property. No added asphalt to the property. No additional buildings. No, no public access, passive recreation. And most importantly, there can only be a judicial modification to this agreement. So it's not like anybody can just decide to change it. It has to go before a court. This is, to me, is very unusual. It really raises the standard of review, in my opinion, for this board. I disagree with the characterization by the applicant's attorney, that it's only the structures. Also, I think it should be noted in the record that the applicant did not produce historic experts to support what their attorney was saying. So I don't know what weight or what credibility the board is going to give that, but, um, the, my client has the experts here. And as I said, I reviewed the easement. I guess now, if the board would indulge, I want to get into the nitty-gritty of the proofs and how deficient they've been.
You, you had mentioned that there are different zones that this sign is allowed. I don't think you went into what those zones were.
That's the next exhibits are.
O7?
I'm, I'm going to just go through the variances that are required. And then I'm going to discuss the master plan and the zones where, where this is allowed. Because as I said, the applicant's planning report does not identify the current variances. There's, uh, variance for more than one principal use on the site. There's the D1 use variance for, for the actual billboard, excuse me, board members. There's a setback variance, a C variance, uh, of five feet from Route 80, where a 50-foot setback is required. There's the D6 height variance. Those are not presented for this board in an updated planning report. And I'm, I am concerned, on behalf of my client, that if that report is allowed to stand in the record that wherever these things may go, Mr. O'Neil, that someone is going to be very misled about what the variances, uh, that are in the current application. So I really want to drive that home. Responding to the board attorney, um, now, about the zones that allow off-premise signs. Um, in, in this exhibit, Figure 4, zones for off-premise signs. Parsippany is a big place, so we couldn't really show all the way to the east. Okay, so we, we just tried to keep it within reason around, uh, the subject site. Again, using that same aerial that we've used throughout, highlighting with our, our purple explosion here, uh, the, uh, the billboard. We have three, three sites, two of which are shown here. We have the POD zone, uh, to the north of us. We have the LIW5, which is farther east and not shown. And then there's the O2. These zones are identified in the 2020 master plan, um, as, as having, um, this use. 2020. So it's a very recent master plan. It has not been revised. And that is where the township has designated appropriate locations for this. We looked at, uh, the distances, uh, here, just to give you an example. The POD zone, uh, to our north is about 0.4 miles from the subject site. And the O2 zone is about 1.36 miles to the east of us. And obviously, the LIW5 is, is farther than that. The LIW5 is, um, an area that borders East Hanover, Edwards Road. It's near I-80, I-280, and US 46. So when we look at all these three areas that the township has designated as appropriate for off-premise signage, they total close to 99 acres. I should also mention that we took a look at the listing of currently issued permits for billboards. Outdoor advertising, it's called, on the NJDOT website. And there is permits within Parsippany for at least 22 off-premise signs. Now, whether they've all gotten municipal approval, I don't know. But any representation that this township has banned the use or is not allowing it is factually incorrect on those two, um, those two facts. One, 99 acres has been zoned to permit this use. And when you look at public information, outdoor advertising, NJDOT website, and you search for Parsippany, there's at least 22 permits. And the Pacific Outdoor is one of them. It's one of them listed.
Can I ask a quick question?
Is it true that, um, to, to put a sign up, it has to conform to, to the zoning? And the zoning, if I remember correctly, has to be a minimum, minimum square foot lot. And it also has to be the primary use. Is that correct?
Some of the zones, they do, um, they do permit secondary use. I have a summary I can...
Accessory use or...
Secondary.
Secondary.
No, on, 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 on two of the zones, I believe it is. A, I guess the ordinance term is off-premise sign. An off-premise sign can be a second, uh, primary use. An off-premise sign can be a second primary use. I might have to front the highway.
Bernie, you say something?
Or is John Chadwick?
John could not come this evening.
I want to say what you need to permit the zone.
In the O2 and the POD and the LI5, they all refer to this Section 430-185E. And in the O2, the minimum lot area is the same as the zone. I believe, Mr. Chairman, this is what you're asking me. I hope I'm responding sufficiently. In the O2 zone...
Maybe I was, I had, I never read it. I was told some information. If it's not correct, that's just, don't, forget I said it, okay?
Okay, so as far as I can see, I believe this is...
You said there's 22 potential signs.
22 permits have been issued by the New Jersey Department of Transportation within Parsipony. Now, whether any of those or all of those have gotten local approval because they must get municipal approval...
I was under the impression that any application would have to come before this board.
That's correct. So I don't know which ones have.
We've only approved one.
Okay, well, I don't know this.
With the existing billboards, would they be part of that 22?
The Pacific Outdoor, which is the subject of this application, is listed on those permits that have been granted by NJDOT.
That 22, are you talking just electronic or electronic and static, the old type of billboards? There is other billboards in Parsipony?
It's all billboards in Parsipony, yes.
On Route 10, there's one.
Oh, on Route 10, okay, I'm sorry. I'm thinking Route 580.
Just while we have this one up here, if I've got my bearings correctly, the POD zone is basically right where we're sitting, we're in part of that?
Yeah, sure, the municipal building, I believe, and, Mr. Chairman, directly, I believe it's like right over there.
Right, okay, so that whole run there along 287, okay.
Yeah. Okay, so relating this to the master plan, which was not discussed by the applicant planner, and in fact, as our attorney has pointed out, there's a whole historic preservation element in the master plan. There's actually a map of the entire township that shows the location of historic sites. So it's really obvious, anybody looking at that map would see where this billboard site is and that my client's property is right across the highway. It's very obvious on that map. And as our attorney has pointed out, there's an entire section devoted to discussion of this. Again, not mentioned in the report submitted for review by this board. I believe the testimony of the applicant planner was it wasn't important to look at this site.
Well, we differ.
We think it's very important, and we're putting on evidence to hopefully convince this board of the same. So looking at the master plan, and that's from 2020, and it designates these sites as appropriate and reasonable for this use, we believe that this application is completely contrary to three of the goals they're in, and I will just discuss them. They have to do with historic preservation, cultural resources, and aesthetics. So Goal 11 in the master plan talks about encouraging new development and redevelopment to take into account community aesthetics and enhance the visual and aesthetic appearance of the community. It calls for promoting the integration and reducing apparent scale of development. Obviously, the proposed sign exceeds the height of everything around it. And given the nature of this sign with its electronic messaging that flips every few seconds, very intrusive, very noticeable, and very impactful to the township.
Ms. Holcus, are you aware that the sign presently before the board is taller than the sign that was originally proposed before the board?
Yes.
In your opinion, is that more or less intrusive then on the neighborhood?
Well, it's very intrusive, and it also is a D6 variant.
We'll get to that. And are you aware that the height of the sign was raised to accommodate?
Yes.
One property owner?
Yes, and I should also mention for the record, I have been present at every public hearing. So I heard all the testimony firsthand, as it happened. And yes, I remember the applicant explaining that this difference was done to appease the office building adjoining this site to the north. And I believe there was some agreement about, we'll advertise for your vacant office space. I remember hearing that as well.
So the sign went, what, 20 feet higher?
Yeah, I think it was 40 feet, and then it became 60 feet.
Because it was blocking one building?
That was the only reason that was given.
In your professional opinion, is there any planning reason that a sign originally proposed at 40 feet would be raised to 60 feet?
No.
Well, I asked you.
No, no, certainly not for that reason. Maybe if it was determined that somehow there would be less impact to the township, not to an adjoining property owner. No.
All right.
Totally inappropriate. So the second goal that this runs contrary to is Goal 12, establishing community identity to support historic arts, cultural township resources. Township programs unite the community, as was explained by the property owner. They perform joint ventures for cultural events with the Historic Preservation Committee, school districts, Morris County Tourism, and local community and civic organizations. So placing such a structure in the vicinity of this site will obviously negatively impact any of those organizations coming to enjoy this cultural resource. Thirdly, the historic preservation element in the master plan contains two goals, which are circumvented by this application. Promote history and ecotourism, promote landmark visits and use. And lastly, safeguard historic sites. So now, turning to the statutory criteria, there's a D1 use variance before you, a D6 height variance, and C variances for the setback that I mentioned for Route 80.
Now, just as you start this discussion, I want to go back to something that you've already mentioned, I think, twice. And I want you to please explain to the board why you have used this phrase. I believe you have said twice that this proposed use is not particularly suited for this site. And could you explain to the board why that's important?
Yeah, that's one of the criteria for a use variance. And I think that it's really apparent on... There is nothing distinguishing this site from what's to the north and to the east of it, if we're just looking at the north side of Route 80. Absolutely nothing. Everything has a building on it. Powder mill towing, auto repair is permitted in the B2 district. So we're going to take a conforming site and make it non-conforming by adding this billboard. I don't see how that's in the public benefit. It may be in the applicant's benefit. It does not serve the needs or the good of the community at all. It's totally inappropriate, and there is nothing particularly suitable about this site at all. I gave you all the elevations from USGS topo, and our near map also has digital elevations that we look at. It's very accurate, the topo elevations that I gave you. And that is another thing that makes this particularly unsuitable for what is proposed here. The D1 use variance is one of the most complex variances to grant because inherent in a use variance is that it contradicts the zones, right? So here we have a situation where the township has specifically zoned 99 acres incongruent in the township for this use. And yet, this applicant wants to put it in a place where it's going to impact residential neighborhoods. And might I add, our OVL3 zone, which is on the other side of Route 80, but you can see has a clear view of this site, is a zone that the township has just recently implemented as a Mount Laurel overlay, okay, for multifamily housing, townhouses and multifamily housing. So there may or may not be multifamily housing also in the future with a clearer view of this monstrosity, really, is what it is. So let me, given the topographic nature of the surrounding area and the existing uses, this is a developed area of the community, and this intrusion is coming in if you grant this variance. As we said, the D6 height variance, the testimony on the record was solely to a piece of neighborhood.
Let's, you run the use variance, let's just stay on it for just a moment. So is it accurate to say that for someone to qualify for a use variance, the applicant must satisfy what's called the positive criteria and the negative criteria?
Yes.
And do you want to address those, or are you deferring that?
Well, the positive criteria has to do with the particular suitability of this site. I think I've given the board, there's lots of testimony, factually based of why this is not suitable, given the topography and the surrounding development pattern of the property. Also, that there is an existing conforming use on this site. There is nothing compelling this applicant to propose this use other than, I would assume, revenue, okay? There's a functioning, operating business on this property. So I don't know why there needs to be two functioning, operating, revenue-generating things on this site.
And how about the negative criteria? What is that?
The negative criteria goes to two prompts. The applicant must demonstrate to you that if you grant the variance, it will not result in any substantial detriment to the public good, nor will it substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone planning zoning ordinance. That really means the master plan, which the applicant's planner did not mention. And the historic preservation element, a portion of the master plan, which the applicant's planner testified he didn't need to look at.
So in your professional opinion, has the applicant satisfied either of these necessary elements, either the positive criteria or the negative criteria?
No, none of them.
All right.
I should also say, in my opinion, and I disagree with the applicant's planner, they pulled out a couple of purposes of planning from the MLUL and said, this promotes the purposes of planning. I completely disagree with that. And it does not support municipal action for appropriate uses. That was, I believe, one of the things called out by the planner. It does not promote a desirable visual environment.
Please speak up.
Does not promote a desirable visual environment. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, my mic was off. I apologize. The applicant's planner also testified that the setback relief, that setback from Route 80 that I mentioned, the C variance, and the height variance relates not to blocking scenic views or creating shadows. No, no, it's the impact on the neighborhood and the surrounding area, and this sign will become part of the view shed, and it's going to significantly and substantially diminish the value of this historic site that we've heard testimony from experts on. The denial of this application does not impose any hardship on this applicant. As I said, there's a functioning business on this site. There is no hardship if this applicant is denied permission to construct a 60-foot-high electronic billboard.
In the B2 zone, which is where this property is located, is a property owner permitted to have two principal uses?
No.
Is that another variance that's sought in this application?
Yes, yes.
Could you address that, please?
There's no reason to have two uses on this site. I mean, especially one as egregious as this, where it doesn't even conform with the height, and there's a setback variance, and not to mention the visual impacts which have been discussed.
I believe the applicant's planner said that having two principal uses met one of the purposes of municipal land use law in that it permitted the more efficient use of land. Could you comment on that, please?
Well, the township has specifically prohibited that. So the zoning doesn't allow it. There's no compelling reason to have that here.
So multiple principal uses on property, it's not considered to be a lawful efficient use of land?
Not in this zone. Some communities, if there's a shopping center, they may allow a pad for a restaurant or something. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about a site that's fully developed with an operating business. I also want to mention another false statement in the applicant's 2019 planning report that was never updated. He mentions in there that this is a two-sided or two-face sign, and one is static, one face is static, and the other is electronic. That's not true. Both faces are electronic.
I'm sorry, I was always under the impression both sites were going to be electronic.
Yeah, they are. Well, the applicant's planner's report does not say that they are both.
Okay, well, testimony by the applicant suggested otherwise.
Well, that planning report from 2019 is going to be creating quite a bit of confusion if someone reaches for it. Okay, yeah.
Could you address the height variance? And first, let's start with what are the criteria for height variance, and then could you address this?
The impact of a height variance is what impact is it going to have on the surrounding area. Obviously, I've given you testimony on the topographic conditions, that this is going to rise to an elevation of about 390, and there's nothing that high around it. The applicant was asked to produce photo simulations of this sign, and they were also asked to give notice to the property, a certified notice, because I was at this hearing, certified notice of the height test, balloon test, crane test, whatever you want to call it. The owners within 200 feet were supposed to get certified mail-in. Nobody got it. No one got it. How some of them happened to see it in their travels is, you know, it is what it is. But they were not notified of it. Had I been notified of it, I would have come out to see it myself. So would we. The board, so would we.
We're kind of dragging, okay? We've all, we've heard the testimony about the sign not...
There was insufficient...
Come on, let's move this along. Let's talk about the important things you want to talk about.
There was insufficient...
Things that everyone in this room knows about, and everyone has heard 16 times.
There was insufficient evidence, in my opinion, insufficient evidence presented by this applicant. And in fact, the applicant did not respond to the request of the board to produce the evidence, that being photo simulations. That type of information was also asked for in the board planner's report. Mr. Chadwick asked for that type of information, and then it was amplified by the board. And now, the applicant has rested tonight without producing that.
In terms of the height variance, first of all, is there a distinction that you can explain to the board, I'm not trying to be offensive or patronizing, but just as part of your testimony, between a D variance and a C variance for a height variance? Is there a distinction?
Well, the D variance puts something before the board of adjustment, so it's very significant. If an application has just a C variance, it can go before the planning board.
And is this height request a D variance or a C variance?
It's a D1. A D6. The height is a D6, the use is a D1. The C variance also, I don't think there were sufficient proofs. They are requesting that setback variance from Route 80. As you well know, C1 criteria has to do with the physical conditions, unique physical conditions of this site. Again, look at the exhibit, there's nothing unique about this site requiring that setback deviation to Route 80. Or the argument has to be made about a C2 where the benefits outweigh the detriments, and it can't just be benefits to the applicant, okay? The only benefit of a 60-foot-high structure setback five feet from Route 80 is to this applicant.
So in your professional opinion, has the applicant presented sufficient proofs to allow this board to grant a D6 height variance?
No. The application, in my opinion, fails on both the positive and negative criteria.
For that variance as well?
For all the variances.
Is the, are the positive and negative criteria also applicable to the second principal use variance? Is it the same analysis?
Right. Why would there be an additional principal use, only to benefit this applicant? And as I mentioned, the setback variance has to do with the C1, C2 criteria. And as I mentioned, the setback variance has to do with the C one, C two criteria. So in summary, because I know the board is indulging and they want to move on and I hear the chairman and I see the chairman, so I'm, I'm going to sum up now, okay? The things I want to leave the board with, my conclusion, the application fails to meet the positive and negative criteria. There are no unique features to this property. It is not particularly suitable. There is no hardship imposed on this applicant by denying this variance. It is contrary to the township zoning for this use and also its most recent 2020 master plan as to where this off-premise type of signage should go. It conflicts with the planning purposes of the municipal land use law. It's contrary to the land use goals of this community and I recommend denial.
Counsel, did your planner produce any type of report?
No.
No.
Okay. You rely just on the testimony?
Questions by the board?
I did have one. You're going over, excuse me, you're going over the heights and 392 feet at the top of the sign. Now, from the, the road on Route 80 to, I guess you would say, ground level of both sides, do you know the height there?
Right. So you're talking about Route 80 at 318 feet?
Okay.
And then are you talking about the site?
Well, I'm talking about where...
The site ground level?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. So the site ground level would probably be about 330 feet, 332.7 is what we had it at, okay? And they're adding 60 feet to that. That's where I got the 392. My client's property is, is about 370 feet. So we're going to have 392 over here and 370 over here. And the park is at about 338, so...
All right, so from the edge of the property to, just say you fell off of it, how far down you've fallen through 80?
Whatever the difference between 318 and 370 is.
All right, that's just, okay.
Yeah.
I would just like to state for the record that we seem to have lost Mr. Willens. He dropped off, so I don't know if there's a, he does have COVID, his wife has COVID, so he may have had to, just for information. Any other questions by the board of this witness? Any members of the public? Mr. O'Neil, you have any questions?
I will get out of the way.
I just have a couple of questions about your testimony, if I may. You mentioned testimony of your experts, your historic experts. Could you name them and give their qualifications, please?
No. I, I think you should ask them.
Well, I missed, I went to the hall, had a drink. I know members of the public.
Phil, what are their names and their credentials?
You are...
That's not question on my testimony, is it, Mr. O'Neil?
You referred to experts. I'm asking you who you're talking about.
I said the experts that were presented this evening.
There were members of the public that came up and testified. No one was sworn in as an expert. I want to make sure I didn't...
Okay, forgive me. They're not experts?
No.
Okay. Excuse me. My misstatement.
You mentioned 22 licenses, 22 permits issued by NJ DOT.
Right.
Do you know where they are?
Give me a minute, I'll pull my list down.
I'm just interested in the ones in the permitted zones, POD and the...
Oh, well, we didn't look at the zoning. No. I can give you, how about I give you, what would you like? The application number, the dealer name? That would be, you know, whether it's Outfront Media or your client.
How's that going to tell me where it is on the map?
It's not. It's not. I didn't do that analysis and neither did you.
Why would I?
Why would I? Why would I?
You brought it up.
I brought it up in terms of there's a number. There's a number and also to verify, and also to verify that your client, this applicant, is, is on the list. Yes.
I know it's getting late, but just be civil with each other.
Do you have the address of the applications?
Pardon, pardon, pardon me?
Do you have the addresses?
The permit, the permit list does not give the addresses.
We don't need to go through 22 permits.
The permit, but the permit list does not give addresses. It, it gives a description, okay? For instance, a description of, of this property, our subject property on the DOT list, and I would be happy to provide this for the board. Okay, it gives the permit number, 76521. And then the travel direction, west, side, right. Then it gives a dealer number. Then it says dealer name, Pacific Outdoor Advertising LLC, Route Interstate 80. Description, it says Interstate Route 80 N slash S, 400 feet W O, I guess means west of, Parsippany Road. Gives the milepost number, 43.21. Number of faces two, multi-message yes. Total square feet, 1,920, which I believe is more than presented on this application.
I didn't really ask that, but thank you.
I'm explaining to the board why I cannot give an address.
I'm not offering.
So the POD zone, for instance, which includes Town Hall, did you do an analysis of if all these sites are appropriate for, for billboards?
No. No, I did not.
How about, do you know what's in there? You know where it is. You identified Town Hall, you know where in Town Hall, we're in the POD zone, right?
It's a office, offices.
Office.
Mm-hmm.
An office park.
That's what it looks to be, yes.
How about the O two zone? You know what that is?
Offhand, no.
Okay. That's the PAL.
Okay.
The zone to the west, do you know what that is?
No.
I'm sorry.
No. No, I don't. I just know the acreage. That's correct. We looked at the block and lots that are in the zones based on the Township of Parsippany GIS. Uh-huh. That's how we did it.
Zone to the east, break it up between the waste treatment facility and the white ones or...
I, I don't know. We just looked at the parcels, not what was on there.
All right. I have no further questions then.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I have a tiny bit of...
Sure, go right ahead.
All right. Ms. Holmquist, I just want to go back to the DOT information that you and Mr. O'Neil were addressing. Does the list of the 21 or 22 permits indicate whether they are live or expired?
No, it does not state that. I would assume that if they're on this list, they, they are current and valid permits. But it doesn't give a year or an expiration date, no.
So you actually don't know?
No.
All right. Because have we received any evidence, in this case to your knowledge, that the applicant has a current permit for this billboard application?
Well, I do recall, having sat through all of the hearings on this project from beginning to end, that it was asked, perhaps by our side, I don't know, but somebody asked for a copy of the DOT permit. And that was, to my knowledge, never produced by the applicant.
There was an expired permit, was there not?
I, I believe it was acknowledged that a, a permit had expired, yeah.
And I believe, Mr. Chair, I can say, also having been at the hearings, that it was nearly a year ago, I believe. I think it was December 2021, where I believe we were advised that the, that the current permit was going to be produced. If it has, all I can say is I'm not aware of it and this board doesn't have it as far as I know. All right. I have nothing further.
That's it?
That is it for my...
You want to sum it all or are you going to go based on what your testimony is? Got any questions, sir? I'm sorry. I apologize, Mr. O'Neil. It's getting late. Do you want to sum it all or are you going to base, go based on what your testimony?
Well, I'm, may I ask the brutally honest question of what time does the board want to get out of here tonight?
Sometime before daybreak.
No, no, I'm serious.
10 o'clock.
All right, well, you're already after hours.
I, 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 look, I've, I've been here since, at nights at quarter to, quarter to one still hearing testimony, okay? I don't want to do that tonight. I want to expedite this as fast as I can at this point, but I want to, I want to have this as a solid hearing on, on both sides, okay? So...
Well, I don't want to rest on the testimony. I would rather make closing remarks and I will make them to the point, all right? Which is this. First, as I have already stated, I represent one household, two objectors to this application. But you've heard from, I didn't count them, but I'm going to say another dozen plus, give or take, people opposing this application because of its unquestioned negative impact on the residential area, on the historical aspect of it, on traffic, perhaps on safety. But I want to focus on the legal technicalities that this board faces in terms of having to vote on this application. It's a variance application. It's not a policy choice. It's not a, is it good or is it bad? It's a variance application. And New Jersey statutes and New Jersey case law lay out exactly what a board is supposed to do for a variance application. And as our planner noted for you just a few minutes ago, that for the most part, what you do is you look at positive criteria and negative criteria, where the positive criteria generally go to, gee, does this variance belong with this property for some really good reason? And the negative criteria is whether or not it does, what kind of negative impact is it going to have on the neighborhood and on the policy decisions made in the master plan. And so what we have here is an application that, one, needs a use variance. This is not a permitted use here, very simple. Two, it's not even taking a non-permitted use on a vacant lot. It's taking a non-permitted use on a lot where there's already a substantial business. So a second variance, independent of the first one, is that it is a second principal use, which is another variance. Third, it is going to be the highest structure around by far and has been pointed out, not only is it the highest, but it was deliberately made higher than originally planned because the owner of the office building directly next door complained that it was going to block the view. And then the solution was, okay, well, we'll make it higher. So we will sacrifice the entire neighborhood for the benefit of one adjoining property owner. So that's third variance. And, and those are all, oh, and, and as my planner explained, that's what's called a D variance, not a C variance. A D variance is more significant. And it's a D variance because I believe under the statute, it's 10% higher than the permitted height on the site. And that's a legislative choice. It's not a personal thing on our point. It's part of the statute that if a structure is going to be 10% more than the permitted height on a site, it becomes a D variance. And by the way, I believe it requires five votes. All right? Just like a use variance requires five votes. Again, pointing out that the legislature, which has created the law that we're all bound by, finds that a use variance is a very significant variance to grant. Now, this application, and I'm going to use the word obviously, I know I'm an advocate, I know I'm here for a position, but I'm going to use the word obviously because I think it's true. This application obviously does not satisfy the necessary positive criteria and the necessary negative criteria. There is no particular reason to put a billboard on this site where powder mill towing exists. There's just no particular reason. The only reason, the only reason is because DOT granted a permit for it. That's the only reason. But DOT granting a permit is independent of this board's function. DOT has to issue a permit in order to get to this board, otherwise it never even gets to you. But DOT issuing a permit has nothing to do with whether or not you, you decide under your own authority whether zoning has been required. DOT doesn't look at zoning. DOT doesn't look at positive and negative criteria. DOT just says, okay, under our own criteria, based on Route 80, this is a legitimate site where we can issue a permit. But again, I cannot overstress this. The law is very clear. There's no ambiguity to it. Totally clear that although that gets them in the door to allow them to appear before you and make a request, it has nothing to do with whether or not you should grant it. And so here, this, as, as our planner testified, there is no particular suitability of a billboard for this site. Now, it's possible, didn't happen, possible that the applicant could have come before you and said through its planner or some other professional, we looked at other sites. We looked at other sites. We looked at the O two, O two zone and we looked at the LIW five zone and we looked at the POD zone. And we actually made inquiries of people to see whether it was possible to put a billboard there. There was no testimony like that. So all we have is this floating site, floating in the middle of Parsippany, where for some reason, according to them, this is the place that is particularly suited for there to be this digital billboard. Now, even if it were, and it's not, it is, again, overwhelming that this is going to have a very negative impact on the neighborhood. And so it's going to have a negative impact on one of the key historic sites in town. It's going to have a negative impact on residences. It's going to have a negative impact on traffic. And there were people who were testifying saying, I don't want to be seeing the light from this digital billboard shining in my bedroom window. I don't want my patients to have to see this while they're in my office. There was testimony to that effect. And so, and so this use variance satisfies neither the positive criteria nor the negative criteria and therefore it's got to get denied. The same thing for the second principal use. Again, if it were a vacant lot, it still wouldn't satisfy a use variance, but at least somebody could say, well, there's nothing going on on this property. At least let's put something there. But there is no rational basis for this board to say, we already have powder mill towing, let's put something else there now. And in fact, I recall that I cross-examined the applicant's planner and he said, yeah, anything that would fit there. Could be a restaurant, could be this, could be that. So under the applicant's planning analysis, what you are now facing is if you have any principal use on any lot, anywhere, you can now be faced with a flood of applications saying, oh, there's 2,000 square feet of unused space on this lot. Let's put another principal use in. Because there's no other basis for doing it. There's no reason for there to be a second principal use on this lot. There's no reason for there to be a 60-foot-high mammoth structure that was raised at, to the, as I've already said, at the expense of the entire town. And that leaves one final, I think, only one final tiny variance, which is the setback, which is almost like a little bit of frosting on the cake. I don't even have to mention it because if that were all there was, we wouldn't even be before you. So you have heard a lot of opposition. You have, I will say, received, what word shall I use? Incoherent planning testimony from the applicant where it is that planner's belief, testified to it, that there is no lawful place in Parsippany to put a digital billboard. And even when I confronted him with the three ordinances that specifically give that right, he said, well, I don't know. I don't know. So how on earth can you believe the testimony of a planner who has done so little homework for this application that he doesn't even know that there are lawful places to put a digital billboard in this town? How can you believe anything he says? Anyway, as we've already noted, there's also not before you any evidence that there is a current permit for this application. As has already been pointed out tonight, there was a secret crane test. It was out in the open. It wasn't secret that way, but nobody got notice of it. And I believe crane tests are a fairly significant part of the record because you actually refer to them and refer to what they showed. And there was no testimony in this hearing about what the crane test showed because nobody saw it. I mean, it would have been the applicant who would have come back before you and said, here was our crane test, here's what it showed. So there was a massive failure of proof. There was a massive failure of coming before you with any of the necessary elements to grant a variance. And I think I've taken up enough of your time.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of points to finish up here tonight. So it's true, the crane test notice did not work the way it was supposed to. No one was noticed on it, so that's why we're not relying on it. And one of the things we pointed out throughout the hearings is this, this billboard's going to look exactly like its twin at Seven Enton Road, which is up, running and lit. So if you want to see what this billboard looks like, we invited you multiple times to go there and pointed out that that billboard is actually closer to the residential homes, Seven Enton Road. You're wondering why John said that the cell towers are not permitted in any... said that the cell towers are not permitted in any zones. I'm going to show you why. We had testimony regarding the permitting process from the state. You have to be certain distances from ramps and such to get your permits. Let's just look at the POD zone. The billboard needs to be along the road. Here is the ramp next to the hotel, which is next door to this building. That property's too close on the highway, because they're right on the ramp. That property's too close. Guess what property qualifies in the POD zone? Town Hall. The guess is really obvious down here in the O2 zone. It's only the PAL building. That's the only building that it's permitted at. And the other zone is Wetlands and the Waste Treatment Facility. Sprint Spectrum versus the Borough of Ringwood zoning board. In 2005, Ringwood got sued because they didn't have an ordinance permitting cell towers. So they changed their ordinance. They changed their ordinance to allow for zones with the cell towers. And those zones had one thing in common. They were all municipal property. So they went back to the court, and the court said, the provision of that ordinance is to do what it cannot do under federal law, which is prohibit, plant it from constructing telecommunications facilities in Ringwood. This board got sued for not permitting a cell tower, for not permitting a billboard, pardon me. The ordinance was changed. The ordinance was changed in exactly the same way Ringwood changed their ordinance. We don't have to go casting around for who owns the properties where the billboards are permitted. It's the town. And the town, by the way, doesn't have any permits. You can take my word for it or not, but the bottom line is, your ordinance does not permit billboards in this town without specific town approval. It is defective under Ringwood's case. Otherwise, I'll rely on the proofs and thank the board for its time.
So moved. Motion to go into conference?
So moved, Snyder.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We'll have a volunteer start?
I'll start. The illumination, the size, the height, and that's a critical one, the location and the intrusive nature of the sign will have an adverse impact on the neighborhood and an adverse impact on the historical aesthetics of the preserved property across Route 80. I do feel it's essential to preserve the character of people's neighborhoods, to protect the history of our town, and to prevent the encroachment of commercial endeavors on people's homes, and the master's plan speaks to this. Given that this application is inconsistent with multiple aspects of the township's master plan, this specific site is not particularly suitable, and the fact that this will have a significantly negative impact on the township, and it doesn't satisfy any of the positive or negative criteria, I will be voting no.
Okay. I echo much of what Mr. Kaplan said, the structure, the height of the structure, the intense light illuminating from it. It will negatively impact the residents and the quality of life, interrupt the historic character of nearby property, and does not really directly benefit the township, and is intense distraction. The planning expert presented by the opposing party was compelling. However, in addition to that, I respectfully disagree with Mr. O'Neill. The Etten Road sign is not a twin. The Etten Road sign is one side illuminated, one side blacked out.
I stand corrected.
That is not a twin. Wait, I'm going to keep going with this, okay? And then, I struggled throughout this application and asked several times for testimony in relation to being able to put the height in proper context. And I have cited many mile markers throughout the testimony, for you to come back and say what the height of certain signs were, because I'm really familiar with 287, I'm very familiar with 80, so I could put it into context. Not only was that not given, but the misstep in that you, you know, did say everything went wrong with that crane, you know, I have to tell you, I mean, I just don't understand how this zoning board could have been more clear in regards to wanting to be notified and wanting to be out there. I think people were willing to take off of work to see how this was going to look in this area. And so I'm going to try to be diplomatic. At the very least, it was very dismissive of the applicant. At the very most, I think it borderline bad faith. You know, again, I say this with all due respect, but I'm just like baffled over the fact that this board couldn't have made itself any clearer. And so, like, you know, the evidence requested around the height really was poorly represented in this. And frankly, just bottom line is, that this application, much like Mr. Kaplan has said, has not provided enough of positive criteria, a lot of negative criteria, but enough positive criteria has not been met to justify granting a variance that, again, deviates from many elements of our master plan. I too will be voting no.
Thank you. I agree with, you know, the comments you heard so far. I'll just concentrate on the variances. They are requested D1, D6, and the setback. I really don't see any evidence of any of the, you know, variances that I can look at it and say I can approve it. Look at the, you know, D1 variance. D1 variance is just, this side is not suitable. We see it. I mean, it's not, and there was enough testimony about it, that this side is not suitable for the light sign, the sign here. D6, the height, height went from 40 to 60 feet. I had some hope. I wanted to see how it looks like, and I don't know what happened. Maybe the applicant realized that it's not going to work if we show the sign to everybody. But the height is significant. You know, most of the people, most of the residents around this site can see the, you know, the sign, and two-sided sign, significant lighting over there. And I don't see any, even reducing the height is not going to make it. So, looking at, you know, hearing the, you know, the opposition's, you know, objectors today, and there is nothing that tells me that this should get approved, and I will be voting no.
I'll make my summation really quick, is everything the folks on this board have said, the questions we've asked all along. I am in agreement with my counterparts here. We spent a lot of time listening to this and coming here and trying to get all the information, and everybody sitting up here at the time we've given really wanted to get out there and see the demonstration. I'd like to know what it would look like that high. I would like to know what it looked like a little lower. Maybe I would be less opposed if it was lower and it wasn't going to affect the neighborhood around, not just the historic site, which is important enough, but the height of it and the positioning of it, and quite honestly, the lack of, you know, being forward in showing us that test. I'm going to vote no as well.
Mr. Jaskowitz?
Thank you. I'm going to make a briefer. I agree with all my colleagues on the left side of me. I think as you got higher, you disturbed probably more people, and the light would reflect to more people. I think the turnout matters to me, because when people care that much, I have to listen. And I think it's been a problem from day one. I think there was some bad faith or whatever that really affected a lot of people up here. And I think the height is just something you can't get around. And I don't even think that lowering it back to the original height would matter to me. So I will be voting no.
Very shocked, no. Mr. Berkowitz?
Well, I guess I don't have to convince anybody to be against this application, which I thought I might have to. But I agree with everything that's been said. I can't see where this sign is going to have anything but a negative impact on the residential neighborhood. I think the sign is too tall. And I think even if you think about it, the sign trying to broadcast advertising across the highway to Route 80 East is just going to create more and more problems for people trying to drive at the sign at the same time from that distance. So for all those reasons, I'm going to vote no.
I've been sitting up here for quite a few years and have gone through many, many cell tower applications and the impact on neighborhoods and the one sign application that we had. I just want to confirm with the board, the 60-foot height is our problem, right? That's our big, big problem.
100%.
Okay? Everybody agrees, right?
100%.
The 60-foot height, all right? And the applicant come in with an application that was not intrusive on the neighborhood and wasn't 60-foot high. We all agree that we may have considered this application, correct?
Correct.
And then down the road, if the applicant comes with, applicant comes with another sign application, we're going to examine it. We're going to examine every aspect of it. And we may very well approve it, or we may very well deny it. But it's the 60-foot, that's the intrusion on this neighborhood. 60-foot, okay? So I am voting against it because of the 60-foot height. That is the biggest problem we have, okay? Because I don't see going forward that we're going to be able to prevent these signs from coming to town. So what means do we have to do is we have to evaluate each one, make them a little intrusion or no intrusion on people's residences. And this one, obviously, with the 60-foot height is your problem. Okay?
Yeah, but to that point, Mr., but to that point, we weren't able to see at any height despite the promise we were given. That needs to be noted.
That is just an insult to this board.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Positive insult to the board. The applicant doesn't give an SHIT. That's the bottom line, okay?
Okay.
Motion was made.
Snyder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? How about we authorize the attorney to draft a...
You can take it over.
The resolution shall be denying the...
Yeah, I was trying to say, let's authorize the attorney to draft a resolution of denial. Do we have a... Jaskowitz? Second?
Snyder.
Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz?
What do we vote?
You're voting yes.
Yes to deny.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Zarella?
Yes.
Kriek?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Hurricane?
Yes.
Result is the applicant, the attorney, has been authorized to draft a resolution of denial. Any other business still?
Nothing. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill.
All in favor for a...
Yes.
Snyder.
Second.
Take them off the boards.